It is 6:03 PM. I am going to call this meeting to order. It's our first in-person meeting in over, oh, what about a year, a year and a half now? So it's nice to finally be back in person. It's not the setup that we were hoping for yet because our internet still has not been installed out here. I was hoping to have a projector and computer setup like I had done with a lot of the virtual meetings. That's something I'll work on for next time. So I still kind of am a little bit like, all the technology's a little bit all over the place, but I think we're ready to go. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance. If you are able, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the future, we will always stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as one. And a moment of silence if we think about those who've gone before us. Marie, can you do a roll call, please?
Okay. Mayor Allen.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Wright.
Here.
Trustee Alter.
Here.
Trustee Decker, who knows his absence. Trustee O'Malley.
Here.
Trustee Pine.
Here.
And we will have our new trustee, Megan, in the she's presence.
Yes.
Attorney Gilchrist is present, and Deputy Clerk Judy Gilchrist is present.
So first off, before we go any further, I do want to share with everyone, former trustee Emily Marphy has moved out of the village. She has submitted her letter of resignation. It reads as follows. Please accept this as my resignation as a village of Housick Falls trustee effective immediately. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to serve my community. Unfortunately, I have moved out of the village. An opportunity I could not refuse presented itself. I would like to thank the community for its support, employees of the village, as well as our attorneys, for all their hard work and commitment to making our village beautiful, safe, and a wonderful place to live. To trustees, past and present, it has been a pleasure serving with each and every one of you. Thank you for your dedication and service to the village of Housick Falls. Sincerely, Emily Marphy. When a, as we've gotten very good at it over the past couple of years, when a trustee has to step down, or in this case, move out of the village, it falls on the mayor to appoint a replacement. I'm very glad to appoint Megan Walrath. She ran in the recent election, and she was actually very close to winning when Bob Decker won, and we were on the board thinking, wow, we have really good people. It'd be great if we had spots for all of them, and now we do. So Megan, officially, welcome to the board. Very glad to have you, and we'll be getting her set up. And as I've done with previous trustees like Deb and Emily in the past, I will meet with you guys over a couple of different meetings and we'll get you ready and things. Feel free to speak up. Do we, do we have an official swearing-in to do?
I can do the official.
Let's do it, please.
Ms. Megan, do you want to come on over? Or I could go over there if you don't mind. Name of the vote simple. The state of New York and the county of Brunswick, the village of Housick Falls are asking you to follow in the suit. So say, "I am Megan Walrath." I am Megan Walrath. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the state of New York. And the Constitution of the state of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge my duties as trustee in the village of Housick Falls. And I will faithfully discharge my duties for the village of Housick Falls. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. You are sworn in on July 13th, 2021. Welcome to the village.
Outstanding. Welcome. Okay, we do have a swearing-in ceremony, but we're going to postpone that to when he gets here and when Chief, who's out on a call, gets here as well. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. He's actually coming from his first day at the academy, so he'll be here when he gets here. At this point, I am looking for a motion to open a public hearing regarding the submission of a community development block grant application to replace the Rogers Avenue water tank. So can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bobby. In a second.
I'll second that, Bob.
Thank you, Craig. We are officially open in public hearing. If you have something that you would like to state or share regarding the intent that we have to submit an application to redo the Rogers Avenue pump, Rogers Avenue water tank, not pump station, that would be different. This is a time to share if you would like to. You just raise your hand. When you're called on, share your name and address. And as a reminder, we record all of our meetings. It's audio recording today and post them on the village's YouTube page. Would anyone like to speak regarding that initiative we're doing? We will have a normal people-to-be-heard later. What I will do is I will get, I will get someone on the line just to answer questions, trustees that you may have as well, just to do a quick summary, but it's kind of the same thing we've done before. And we will keep the public hearing open for a little bit in case people have any questions. Marian, I have you next. While I get the person on the phone, would you mind taking the floor and sharing what you wanted to share regarding Housick Rising's role in the Declaration of trees program?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I know it's only July, but by the end of the month, trees, depending on what the village decides they want to do, would have to be ordered or at least secured. And Housick Rising has struggled with putting the trees on the streets for the last three years. Historically, three years ago, we were asked to do it because the previous year, they didn't go out until the second week in December. And businesses wanted to be able to move that up again. The first year we put the trees out, we assisted the highway department by having a number of volunteers come down here and help put, one of the highway guys helped them put the trees into buckets.
Can you hang on for a minute? I'll get to another meeting.
And get them all ready.
It'll be a minute. It'll be a couple.
Two days of prep down in the garage outside. And then we, then the highway guys put the trees on the streets. That was still, I believe, December 4th, 5th, way after Thanksgiving and Small Business Saturday. So the comment after the first year where we met was, from the businesses, was, you know, we really need these on the streets when the whole rest of the United States is decorated, Thanksgiving weekend, Small Business Saturday, they need to be out. And the businesses need to have time to be able to decorate them. So the highway garage is off Fridays after Thanksgiving, so that means they have to go out the weekend before Thanksgiving. So that was impossible for the highway department to participate in that year. So two years ago, Housick Rising did the entire process alone. We secured the trees through a wholesaler, were able to get more trees on the streets. And we had probably 12 to 15 people volunteer, started at 8:00 in the morning, finished at like 5:00. Again, when we met, we tried to figure out how we could do it faster, or weren't always going to have 15 people show up to help. And so this past year, we thought, okay, let's streamline the process. Let's get the barrels on the streets ahead of time. If we got the barrels out of there ahead of time, then all we have to do is drop a tree out at each location, have a team, then go behind that. That's, we also had Sutton's donate trees this year. So we were able to put over 60 trees on the streets, half of them from Sutton's, half of them still purchased. That went much quicker, but we ran out of barrels. And when I went to go get barrels, I came back and there was nobody left to help put the trees up. It was about 2:30. And I came down to the garage to find out if I could get any help with the last three trees that needed to go on the street. And the highway guys are under a rule that they'd have to return to the garage at 2:30. They would not come back out and help me put the trees on the streets. And I had to try to put three trees up by myself, which I failed in doing. So then this year was the adopt the tree system, so we had many more trees go out. So I had to call three families, tell them the trees weren't available for them to decorate that weekend. So now you're in the middle of Thanksgiving week with people working and everything else. And they were not happy that they wouldn't have a tree up. I called Jerry to call, Jerry couldn't do it over the weekend. Jerry called the garage, and the garage guys had it up on Monday. There were other problems with that system. It is, as Marie can also explain, it is, it is almost a full-time, every single day, trying to figure out. We had signs on the trees as to what family had what tree, locations were important, there were special request locations, the trees had to be evenly distributed. Some of them fell over, mostly because it's very difficult to get a high-power drill, but all the volunteers don't have the equipment needed to put in a four-inch screw through a wooden wedge and into the tree, into the bucket. It is just not something that can be expected of a volunteer. And I think that we have worn out ourselves trying to accomplish this so that the village is decorated by Thanksgiving weekend. And I, we just don't, we can't do, we just, we can't do it.
So, and we talked for a while, Marian and I. Bottom line is, you guys have tried to get this to work. It just hasn't worked the way you guys have wanted it to work for several years. And you are very content to pass it off to someone else to take up.
Yeah, so the options are somebody else takes up the whole project. And with that, and speaking as a business owner, and having spoken to the other business owners at the meeting with Housick Rising, having a tree mid-December is not, we would rather not have a tree than have, be handed a tree in the middle of our busiest month of the entire year. So there are a number of things, the possibility that they don't go on the street and you put half as many trees in the park. Maybe Sutton's would still donate the trees. If that were the case, people could still adopt the trees, but they would be in a central location. They'd be easier to put up. It would be faster to put them up. There's electric for everybody. And if a business chooses to have a tree, they can have a tree.
In the park.
In the park. And then use the $1,000 you would spend on trees in new buckets to, you know, decorate some of the holes in town, just get rid of the flags that we have and get new flags. I'm not, I'm not sure the flags can take another year. They looked plain and bad last year.
So if I could just interrupt real fast. So Marian wanted to speak here, and we had a conversation, and I wanted us to take on the leadership role on this as a village. It would, in my mind, require a couple of us meeting as a committee, starting in the next couple of weeks, putting this out. We definitely need you on this because you've been on the ground for a lot of this. I want to get a list of possible ideas from Marian so that we can bring that to the meeting, and then we basically take the leadership role on this. Trustees, how do you feel about that? It's more duties for us. It's, you know, it basically means that we're going to have a more specific and impactful role in this, and we'll be determining, it's going to be more, probably a little bit more for the DPW guys. So that is something to consider. And we can decide, do it just like we did last year, try to do it in the park, do it smaller. These are the options, but we kind of need to start now and discuss that now and start getting things worked out. You know, if, by the time we hit September, we should have a plan on how it's going to work. We should have contacted businesses who would be interested in doing this and get them sort of signed up so they know what's coming and have spoken with the people who are going to provide the trees and so on and so forth. That's, in my mind, that's the way I'd like to see this role. Does that, does that, what are your thoughts on that as a board?
I'm not sure you're talking over the first year. I'm not sure you've seen.
So three years ago, we started with 40-something. And then two years ago was 53, 54. And then last year was 62, 63. The families adopted trees last year. It was very popular, and people were happy to do it.
The idea of having a lot to donate the trees in the park is a good idea because, like you said, it's kind of something that both of you did, you're not worried about selling them out. Trees that go amongst the businesses can be a priority. And then even more the marriage, the relationships are concerned by families.
All right.
I think that, well, I think we do need to get new flags or some kind of new relationships. They've done well, it's all their purpose, but it's time for them to be done. So I think that's definitely something we should look at. There's a lot more people coming to Housick Falls and stopping in Housick Falls than, or talking down from Newbridge or Cambridge and saying, "Housick Falls is so much better here than there is there." So it's becoming more of a stopping place and a destination. And I think we need to rise to that change.
Any issue with us taking the leadership all over on this? From anyone?
Not my problem.
This past year, we electrified the poles, John Street. They can be utilized as well with some kind of garland wraps around the poles. I think I sent information to Marian, I think it was $109 per pole to put garland on the torn poles.
Lit.
Lit, right.
Lit, okay.
Which, I think we have seven poles on that street.
Okay.
Part of, part of the problem with the trees, and it's not going to make a difference who does it, whether the village does it, Housick Rising does it, any of the businesses that do it, is the wind that comes certainly on John Street. And every day, it's blowing over, and then some of the people adopted trees and decorated them, didn't come back for the upkeep, so things fall off and then, so that's, that's going to happen no matter who's in charge of it. So we should take that into account if we take it over.
All right. So then I guess what I'd like to know is, oh, Craig, did you want to say something?
So as a possible, perhaps the village should take ownership of getting the trees out and okaying wherever they go on. I think that's where the village would excel.
Okay.
And some of the people who've done this previously and done excellent job, the relationships with the businesses and the people and all of that, I'm not sure we're the right, maybe we should be the right one, but I know for sure I'm not the right one to do that type of stuff. So it seems like we already got a great foundation to build on, and the part that I'm hearing seems the most troublesome to you is the logistics of coordinating the tree donation and putting it out and delivering it. If all of that was off the plate, the coordinating with businesses and the getting people to decorate and stuff might not seem so bad.
Right. If I, if I wasn't the one physically putting the trees up, it would be.
So I'm just throwing that out there as an idea to consider that, you know, we've got the resources and the people and the, I had to be direct, I had to help plan getting trees delivered on the street corners. I'm not so much into getting people to decorate the streets, but that's why we have other people that have different strengths. Maybe that's something, maybe that's somewhere where we don't lose all the effort that was done and just say, okay, we'll just do it now.
Well, I think we still want to work with Housick Rising and the businesses all together too. You know, with the themes and thoughts and ideas, et cetera. I don't think you cut that out.
Oh, no, no. Agreed.
No. The bottom line is it's going to fall back onto the highway.
Right.
I mean, and that's, the other, the issue is, with that is, in the timing of trying to get them out prior to Thanksgiving, like the small business week, is Neil's guys are getting ready for winter and getting everything prepped, but we'll have to coordinate that. And while hopefully we're going to be hiring at least one employee, and so we'll have a little more help, but that's, it's going to be more of a coordination than anything.
Right.
And that's where if we can start preparing now and with Marian's help.
Would you or someone from Housick Rising want to stay involved in the organizational aspect of it, or not, not even at this point?
Yeah, I mean, that's, it was a fair amount of work, but we already have, we already have the email chain, we already have, you know, the, we've made maps of where things went and.
Okay. So then, to wrap this up, what I'd like to do is get a meeting in the next week or two with myself, Marie. Either you or someone from Housick Rising who wants to be the point person for this. Neil, any trustees want to be involved in this?
I'll do it. Well, I'm going to need to find it.
Okay. Deb, Megan. And that's what we'll do. We'll set it up in the next week or two and start, start planning. Does that work? Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to hop back to our police officer swearing-in ceremony. So Chief?
Beadman, thank you very much. I'm pretty excited here tonight because tonight's one of the first times that we had the reform board that was just put in place. And the reform board was given a lot of duties, and one of those duties were to help out with the interview process and the hiring of our police officers. And one of the things that the reform board wanted to do, to set the goals, try to replace local individuals from our community, especially from the village as well as from the town. We went through an extensive interview process. We had a number of candidates that came forward. Four were selected, and after they're selected through the interview process and such, they have to go through a physical training process to be passed on to the school. Out of those four, one of them made it. And that's no discredit to the other three. They're going to come back and try it again, but it's pretty, it's pretty difficult. It's from push-ups, sit-ups, to running. Jonathan tested that because he had to do it twice, and he hated third time, second time, wasn't it? He put me through a little bit of a test because I had to start running around the track with him, and so he got me thinking about getting back in shape a little bit more too. So it was a great, a great experience. So we're excited about having Jonathan come on. This is something new because we haven't in the past really have done swearing-in ceremonies here, but I know a little bit about John, but I know the mayor knows a little bit more about John. Just real quick, I want to introduce John's father, David Warner. Daniel, I'm sorry. I don't have my, I better put my glasses on. His mother, Lisa, and this is his grandmother, Mary Boyce. So please, and I'm going to turn it over to the mayor.
Sure. So it's, it's almost a surreal experience because teacher side of me has known John for many years as an incredible musician, violin player, who did a lot at the school. Mayor side of me gets to know John as our first official officer who we're bringing in through this program. Today was day one, correct, of your six-month academy?
Day two.
Day two, okay. That's right. Today's Tuesday.
You don't have to be so stiff. We're not going to yell at you.
And after, after his six months of training, ideally over at the end of the calendar year, John will become an officer at the Housick Falls Police Department. So we are very glad to have John going through this. Thank you, John, for choosing to do this, being a part of this. Good luck to you over the next six months.
I just want to point out too is that part of the hiring process here is we, we have a sponsorship. John is putting six months in on his own time. Once he's complete with that, he'll come to work for us on a part-time basis. So the six-week, or the six months that John is going to be in to this school, he's traveling from the village to Schenectady every day. He's under their guidance. I keep a watchful eye on it, but he's under their complete guidance. So he's, he's dedicated to this, and it's really, it's great to have someone from the village to step forward and be so dedicated to the program. So I think he's going to be a great officer to us. So Marie, Marie was part of the interview process too, so I'd like to ask her from the reform board if she would do the swearing-in.
John, I'll come and stand in front of you. And you can repeat after me. Ready? Okay. By the authority in the state of New York and the county of Brunswick, the village of Housick Falls, repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Jonathan Warner.
Jonathan Warner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And the Constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a police officer in the village of Housick Falls.
Of a police officer in the village of Housick Falls.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
You are now sworn in on the 13th of July, 2021. Welcome to the village of Housick Falls.
Congratulations, John. You're doing, you're communing, your family's proud. Keep that in mind each day as you're doing your training over the next six months, and we are excited to have you on the rotation at the end of your academy. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, bear with me for one minute as I get Tracy back on the phone, and we will finish off our hearing and have her on to answer any questions and talk briefly about this. And I have a Bluetooth speaker here. Hopefully I'll get that working properly. Let me get you on Bluetooth. Hold on one second. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Outstanding. Tracy, so we are here in the board meeting. All the trustees are here. We have, we have the documents that you had sent earlier. Can you just briefly talk about this application that we're going for? I know it's nothing new. We've done it before. We returned down the first time, and we're giving it a second shot to see if we can get this out. So do you want to summarize real fast for us? Are you still there? It does not look like she's still here. Tracy, can you hear me? Tracy?
Sorry, Jackson?
Oh, hold on a minute, Tracy. We lost you for some reason. Can you, can you start over for us?
Totally over?
Yeah, sorry. My Bluetooth for some reason decided to stop working. Awesome.
Oh, well, of course. It's raining out. Okay. The current Rogers Avenue water tank has reached the end of its expected service life and has developed leaks. The village recently spent about $100,000 to try to repair those leaks. Some of those repairs have not held, and other leaks have developed. The Department of Health Inspection identified a need to take action on the part of the village. CDBG funding is Community Development Block Grant, and it's specifically designed for communities that have low to moderate income levels. The village of Housick Falls does meet that requirement. Whoa, what else is going on? We're also tonight, we're going to be, you're going to be looking at the State Environmental Quality Review Act review of this project, which is in support of the application and any future work you do at that site. I think that's it at the moment unless there's questions.
So I have sent this out to the trustees, but this is the existing concrete tank right now, as it exists up at the corner of Rogers Avenue. And is it Ashley drive up there? as it exists up at the corner of Rogers Avenue and is it Ashley Drive up there? Ashley Drive. Um, we had talked about a couple of different versions of, uh, how to replace it. Uh, and we bring up the site plan that kind of shows where the existing is. It's going to be harder to see, but this is the actual property. The diamond is where the existing concrete, um, uh, tank currently is. And the, the proposal at this point is to tear that down and set up a water tower where the circular location is. Um, the reason we chose water tower over, uh, either a concrete one like we have now or some form of hybrid is simply cost. Um, as the, and Tracy, you have to remind me, I think on, on both the seeker and the application, the tower is no higher than thirty feet and no, I think it's like around fifty-three feet wide as a maximum. Is that, does that sound right to you?
Correct, and there are a range of different tanks. Um, one of them, I believe, is saying that it's twenty-one feet high, um, but then it might have a dome on the top. Um, but in general, they're about that size. It would be equivalent volume to the concrete tank. And I would add that the advantage of not having a concrete tank in the ground is that you can repair it without, uh, difficulty. Right now, the concrete tank is buried under the ground, half of it is or more, and it's difficult to maintain. So taking out the concrete in-ground tank and putting in a glass-fused tank would be a benefit in terms of maintenance and longevity.
All right, thank you, Tracy. Trustees, do you have any questions?
Have, has she got any feedback from the state why the first application was rejected with it?
Tracy, do you hear that?
We did not get direct feedback for this project. We had requested it and we had not, um, gotten what they call a post-application review. Um, I have sat on reviews for other CDB projects and we're utilizing those comments. Um, and those were things like, um, details in how the project is going to work. Um, one of the, one of the main things is that CDBG is supposed to be what they call funding of last resort. And because the village has not attempted to apply for other funding, it doesn't score as high as some others. We're trying to make the point within the application that the village has undergone plenty of problems in terms of water supply, you know, in the recent past. Um, and may not have room, um, to incur any further debt. Um, and that's part of the application. Um, if this water tank is not funded by CDBG, then what would the increase be in the annual cost of a, to a customer for that debt service? Um, so those are the kinds of things we're trying to bring further, updating what we can. Um, CDBG also wants to, to see, um, that, you know, you meet the, the low to moderate income threshold. Um, the village does, but the system serves the outside. Um, and actually we got, uh, Charlie Cillian from the office of, that provides this grant to help us do the calculations that show even with including, um, customers, water service customers outside of the village that does not, is not eligible for the LMI. Um, it's still, we're still just above that, that threshold. So we have gotten some assistance with that, um, and we're trying to improve it based on some, you know, other information that we got from other post-reviews.
Craig, do you have something? Okay, that's fine, anything.
I, I would like to point out as well that they did say that because this last, the last round that, um, was actually CDBG twenty twenty money that came out in February, had a really stiff, um, competition, had an awful lot of applicants because there had been no funding available the year before because of the pandemic.
Yeah.
So you may have a better chance this time round simply because some people have already gotten funding.
All right, anyone else have any questions?
No, I, I'd just like to say that, um, I've heard from some residents up on the top of the hill who are concerned about the impacts of a high tower in that area. I think that's one of the reasons they put the, the tank in there underground.
Yeah.
Because that was about the same time as development up in that area. And they didn't, uh, look at a big tower sticking up. So I think, uh, our engineer mentioned some, uh, different colors, like a green color that would stand out as much as blue tower or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, I've heard a couple of comments too. I actually had a friend stop by who was in the area and was not ha- happy to hear the possibility of this. And I actually reached out to Robert and talked about the difference in cost of different types of, uh, of, of, um, towers. And we don't have to have a definitive, Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have to have a definitive design at this point. We're simply going for the award. And once the, if, if we were to get the award, then we would have to finalize the design and have another public hearing, correct?
Correct. So right now, some of the options are, uh, well, I think Robert spelled those out in, in terms of cost differences. And like I said, some of the advantages of replacing that concrete in the ground tank with a ground tank is that maintenance and longevity issue. Um, you would not be getting one of the, you know, the taller towers that's, uh, more expensive and it's even more intrusive, but there's environmental issues and reasons not to do that. So this is, um, it is taller, it's not an in-the-ground tank, but it's still called a ground tank because it's attached directly to, to the ground and it provides that pressure, um, for, for the system downhill. But right now, we're applying for the funding. Um, there can be more discussions on what exactly you want to replace this tank, the concrete tank. When you, you need to replace the tank. Um, if you can get this amount of funding, um, I think right now the budget for the, the tank that Robert Scott quotes for and the engineering and the piping and the new booster station there would be ninety-eight thousand dollars is what you would be, ninety-eight, not, sorry, nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars is what the request would actually be. Um, if you make decisions further down the line on one of the other options that's more costly, you just need to figure out how to, how to pay for that. You could still use the funding for this. Um, and the seeker documentation for this water tank that you're looking at, it would be the same as well. It's basically saying that replacing this water tank on the same site is not going to cause a negative environmental impact. You're not going to have to do an environmental impact statement. Um, but the actual design, what color is it going to be? Where exactly is it going to be? Um, what model is it going to be? You know, how tall, how wide, those kinds of things can be worked out later. Um, I did want to note too though, that there are, there is a slope to the ground at that area going down from Ashley Avenue towards the river. Um, and there are trees there. Um, an average two-story house would be somewhere between twenty-four to thirty feet high as well. So if it was a residential, um, parcel, there would be likely a house there of, of, not, not two different sizes. So, you know, those are some other considerations that can be, you know, taken into consideration further down the line when you discuss the details.
Perhaps when it gets closer, they can do balloon tests, alleviate people's fears so they can see how high it's going to be, you know, if there is any impact.
I couldn't hear that.
Uh, Kevin was just suggesting, uh, if we got it as we got closer, we could do something, maybe some sort of balloon test or something to show people where the height would be to alleviate or, or speak to their concerns.
Yeah, we do have someone who does cap drawing here that could do, uh, uh, kind of a 3D view.
Okay. And I, I think their concerns are absolutely legitimate. Um, that's one of the reasons why I asked Robert, you know, what, what if we decided to go do another concrete and that basically changed the project cost from approximately one million to two million? And we're going for a million dollars in funding, so that would be a substantial increase. And if we had to do that, then we would be looking at, you know, a ban, more debt to cover. And if, you know, we don't get this, we're going to have to make some sort of decision on it. And that also would be a ban and more debt, which is what we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, um, I'll shoot ahead and point to, uh.
That's all right, Tracy.
Oh, okay, I, I remember, Robert and I were also talking about this. Um, some of the problem you have on that site for this project is also maintaining water pressure and water service. So placing a replacement next to or, you know, adjacent to the, um, the working old tank right now allows you to, to keep service, um, while you're putting in the new tank. Um, demolishing the old tank and replacing it with something right there, um, same kind, same place would be a disruption in service.
Okay.
So yeah, so there are, there are a bunch of considerations. Um, it, it is a, a good point, uh, on the part of the residents and it totally can be considered.
All right. Any other questions? Comments?
Neil, how high are these steel, how high is this right here?
I couldn't hear that, sorry.
Thirty feet?
No, it's all right, we're talking about the internal, we're trying to get a comparison.
I'm just trying to get a comparison of how high the tank is going to be.
Well.
Just hold on one second, Tracy.
That's the new land now over there, so the tank is sending out like a, so they prove the, kind of foot-thirty-foot tank and, uh, kind of put it down there.
I got you.
But it won't be strongly hurt.
Okay, just trying to be least intrusive.
Put the guy in the trash.
Right, right.
All right, Tracy, I don't think we have any more questions, so thank you for, um, being a part of this. I wish my, my tech was a little bit better, but thank you for being here on the phone for us.
Okay, then, um, yeah, uh, I am heading home from here. Uh, so if you do have anything else, you can grab me on the cell phone.
All right, thank you very much, Tracy.
All right, thanks.
Bye. So we've had a public hearing open for probably about a half hour at this point. Um, let me just give everyone else a shot to say or, or contribute something if they want to. And then hearing, uh, nothing else, I'm looking for motion to close the public hearing. Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Deb. Any further discussion? All in favor of closing the, uh, public hearing? Aye. Opposed or abstentions? All right, Carrie's public hearing is closed. All right, I know we've been jumping around, let me finish up the bottom of page one and move on to page two. Uh, the first thing is a really big deal. We have had a lot of frustrations with, uh, County Waste on a two-day schedule. Uh, what's happened is they haven't quite been able to finish their first day of pickup that has pushed the second day later. And the people who were tend to be at the second day of delivery end up getting pushed into a third day. So they have talked, we had talked, they had thrown out the idea of a three-day pickup, a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday pickup. And, um, we had said in the past, we were good with that. They are going to start this and they are going to start this on the twentieth of July. Now, I have gotten some pictures from them that I'm going to post on social media tonight and tomorrow and blast out everywhere. But the basic gist is if you are on Thursday, your delivery is, is not really going to change. Um, that, the Thursday delivery is going to stay the same.
Are we talking pickup?
Oh, sorry, pickup, not delivery, wrong, wrong word there. Yeah, that, that would be weird. You're all getting garbage as opposed to the change on this. No, no. Um, so it's going to be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. The Friday pickup people seem to be, uh, second ward, first, second, third, fourth, fifth street down to John Street, Lyman Street and Water Street, which means the Wednesday pickup is the mechanic, uh, street, river, road, um, other side of the river as well as, um, what looks like Church Street. Um, the people behind, uh, twenty-two McCaffrey Street, Cary Avenue, um, the, uh, to the end of Church Street and the people up Rogers Avenue, those people will be the ones shifting over to the Wednesday pickup. So what County Waste is going to do is they're going to hang flyers on all of the trash cans, I think next time around or the time after, before the switch over says, you are switching to Wednesday pickup. And we're going to get these maps out. In fact, I can show you, this is, um, this is, is an example of the Friday map that they sent. What they've done is they have a picture of the village and they've highlighted the area so you can see very specifically, um, which each day is going to be. And I'm going to, I'm going to finalize these, run it through them to make sure I have it right and then blast it out to everybody and, uh, we can even get it in maybe the papers because, well, it would be a better thing to have pictures of garbage delivery. Pickup, pickup, not delivery, pickup. That would be really weird. So I do want to say that's coming and the first, uh, run it sounds like is going to be July twenty-eighth.
Robert, are we going to publish that information?
Um, hopefully tonight or tomorrow. I want to finalize the pictures, put some captions on it and send it back to them and say, am I okay to post this?
July twenty-eighth is pretty quick.
It is pretty quick, yeah. It's basically two weeks.
Tomorrow, I agree, because they didn't get their garbage pickup on Friday. How do we feel when they didn't put it out on Wednesday?
Yeah, yes, and we know that's going to be a thing.
Biggest concern with this was poor communication.
Yep, yep.
An hour, less than two weeks away.
Yeah, so basically I'm going to get it up to, uh, likely tomorrow, um, early afternoon or late morning. Um, and that will give us a two-week heads up. So this week and next week's garbage, uh, will be normal. It's the last week of July where it will be the first run. Do you think it may be a letter to, to, uh, people?
I'm thinking that this is cutting it off in close to let people break a habit that they've had for five, ten years.
Do you think it's worth us putting out a letter to, uh?
Think it's worth doing something more than putting it in the paper.
The paper or, or, I mean, and the flyers, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I don't trust the flyers. I, I put a letter out on everybody's garbage can who's moved.
Mm-hmm. I'm okay if we as a village put out a letter saying everyone your garbage pickup is changing.
Look on the cans that are affected on Friday, you want to put them on everybody's can. And, uh, this week or next week, you know, when they take their cans or they'll see, no, it's not. Your pickup's not on Wednesday.
County Waste is going to be the one putting them on the cans, we can send them in the mail.
County Waste is going to do that.
Yeah.
They're going to do that?
Yeah. They're going to hang the flyers on the cans and we're going to post it on social media and get in the papers.
So they're going to get out of the truck every, at every location and put, I mean, because they don't get out of the truck now.
That's what it said, that's what they said they were going to do. I will double check with that, I'll, I'll follow and make sure that's the case. Yep.
Yeah, because I know it's bad enough having not pick up your garbage until Saturday when it's been out since Thursday.
Yeah.
And then now you put it out on, on Thursday or Friday and your day was Wednesday. There's going to be some unhappy people.
Yeah.
I, I don't want, I don't want to have any, any happiness, I agree with you.
Um, it sounds like the Thursday, um, pickups are not changing. So it's anybody who is scheduled to be Friday, some are moved on to Wednes- to Wednesday. That's the key.
So those people who are Friday, current, present on Friday are going to remain Friday.
There's a lot who will, yes, but some are going to move to Wednesday.
But it, it'll end up being out in this week's paper in the next two weeks and then flyers, so, and on social media.
Yep.
Should get their attention.
There we go. I'll get you some pictures.
If you can send me the map, uh, I'll get it in.
Okay.
I go to print now at about six AM tomorrow morning.
I'll get them to you tonight then.
And I'll run them for the next couple of weeks.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so that is, uh, that update. Uh, the second thing is the prep comments. I had meant to get those online already, I have not, so I'll get those online after, um, this meeting. Uh, these are the comments the village put together from myself, from, um, our environmental attorney, Dave Engel, and from our environmental consultants, Sterling Environmental. We'll have those documents out there, so they're on the website for review. And at this point, we are waiting for the state to review all the comments they received and then make their final decision, get everything in order and issue their record of decision. I have no idea when that's going to be, but I would anticipate hearing by the end of summer. That's sort of my fingers-crossed hope.
Early fall.
Or early fall, okay. Uh, next thing, we had talked about the purchase of a VAC truck and we had built into this current budget, um, uh, eighty-eight thousand, it was like roughly six hundred dollars because the used VAC truck that our sewer guys and our DPW guys and our water guys were very much in favor of, um, getting because it would help a lot of what they do and save on, you know, renting as you need it and so on and so forth. Um, there had been a used one which we thought we could get, that ended up falling through. Uh, so the, the, the one that we have now, um, which I think Neil has printed out a newer one, um, is a much newer, uh, and of course, a much more expensive, uh, VAC truck. The total cost of this one, I wanted to say was a hundred and eighty, is, they're a hundred and eighty-nine, which is basically another hundred thousand more than we had intended to purchase for a vehicle that was, what, two thousand and eleven was the, the older one?
Two thousand and seven.
Okay, and this is a two thousand and seventeen?
Yeah.
So it's ten years, um, uh, less aged, um, four years old at this point. Um, we had budgeted eighty-eight-five, they had come back to us initially, which I sent to you, uh, with a three, four, five, six or seven-year program as a, a lease program as a way of breaking down the cost. We said, hey, we have this money budget, what if we pay this as our down payment this year? And how would it break down to over three and four years? And they came back with, um, if we did that, then we would have an additional three-year cost of thirty-five thousand, six hundred, or a four-year cost of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and nineteen. Again, that's the, the cost each year. Um, and those are both at a lease rate of three point nine six percent. So obviously putting what Um and those are both at a lease rate of three point nine six percent, so obviously, putting what we had budgeted down now means we're paying less over time. Um so the question to the board is, is this still the same direction we wanna go in, knowing this is a much bigger purchase, but for a much newer vehicle? I know Neil and Kenny are both still very much adamant that this is a good thing, Neil, is that correct? And the newer e- equipment means less maintenance and hopefully longer, longer shelf life. Board, what do you guys think?
So we put this out of bid, correct? The VAC truck?
We did.
No other, was it specific to a year or anything?
We only got the one bid.
We didn't give the beta for every item, it's not weird, you can give a beta.
Correct.
Because that ended up being sold or transported off somewhere else.
Did you try to put it up for a bid again, tried to get a price?
These, these are the hard part, you didn't. So my, my other question is, is it, you know, can you find money that's in the current budget to offset some of this price increase?
Um.
Instead of pushing the cost out, how many years are you drafting?
It'd be three additional years after the the initial down payment, or four additional years. Which basically means it would be up to Neil and Kenny to adjust their budget, which means whatever their normal, say, equipment allowance is, will be affected by this number, and they have to keep that in mind, which basically, in terms of of them being their department heads that ha- that adjusts how they plan for the next three or four years to plan what we're gonna do. Yeah.
So we're not saying they're gonna put a sixty thousand dollar budget increase in it each year?
It's gonna come out of existing line item budget for equipment.
Equipment budget for next year, so who knows what's gonna happen.
Right, but based on the top, based on our current numbers, when, Neil, what's your annual equipment budget, do you know off the top of your head?
And honestly, with the, all of the various issues we had with the new highway garage project and the 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 sort of, I'm not sure what words I should properly use here, uh there were a lot of issues with that whole process, and it went over bid, and Neil found ways to cover the cost in his normal budgets, so that we would not have to take additional hits there. Um and I know that, you know, on the sewer side, they're always in the positive um with with what they do.
They generate revenue.
So, i- it's just a matter of, do we as a board wanna commit to this newer item, the more expensive item, knowing that there's gonna be additional costs, but that also means that Neil and Kenny have to manage that in their normal um annual expenses. And Neil, I mean, are you set to handle a three or a four year, do you have a preference on how you would do it? Will manage, will figure it out?
Well, what's the option?
The option is to, is to not get it.
Is there any chance that the uh Prap money can be used for uh?
Uh ARPA, ARPA, ARPA money.
Money can be used for uh down the road, or have we ever figured that out yet?
Andy, do you wanna uh wax poetic on the latest and greatest from the state?
So the comments period on the interim final rule of how you can use the ARPA funds, that ended a couple of weeks ago. Their comments are currently being reviewed, and hopefully the final rule that'll outline what you can and cannot use the ARPA will be available shortly, which is not available now. We'll go to the moment. I mean, there's a general category for water and sewer projects who have to drill down and see if this equipment purchase could be fucking holding over that. So potentially, I I just can't answer it definitively now, because you don't have a part of the moment.
But based on either three or four years Neil, right, and between Neil and Kenny, you're talking, if we go a three year plan, they gotta figure out a way to cut thirty-five thousand dollars out of their budgets.
Or each year.
Or not overspend their budgets by each year. If we go four years, it's, it's less, so it's in seventeen eight versus thirteen six, you know, they gotta find a way not to spend that money. I mean, I think it's, it, you know, we never have issues with Neil or Kenny going over with their budgets. And we always end up usually having a surplus, so I think that, that I I think we, they can make it work, I mean, they're both frugal with their expenses, so. Unless we hit some unforeseen, you know, huge expenditure, which, but I think we should go ahead and move forward with it, and we've just gotta decide which, which one of the options we choose, that's all.
Okay. I, I agree with Bobby, I think we should move forward with this, I know it changes our approach, but I think uh if, if there's anybody who can handle adjusting the budgets, they, they always do, so they can handle it.
As long as we're not seeing, we're not gonna increase, you know, the cost onto the residents, you know, that's.
Just changes what they do with their normal annual budget.
Right, now, you know, see the water sorbile going up, and that's sort of the big challenge, sure.
Alright, then I guess um, trusty, is anyone else, any other thoughts, or is everyone sort of in agreement on moving forward with this?
I'd rather wait and see what happens with the ARPA funding, but it doesn't matter.
Okay. I mean, there's nothing stopping us, if the ARPA funds were.
Well, it took two points, one, just confirm with the dealer that it can be prepaid, if the ARPA funds are available for this.
There's no penalty for for going through, right, to do it on the.
Prepaid is that they're not going to penalize for that lack of interest when they get over the term, and then secondly, just confirming the down payment is in your current fiscal year, and then payment one of the three year term is due during the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. So you're not double dipping in year one.
The same year, right. And and the other, the only, I mean, I I don't disagree with the cabinet, the only issue is that if we wait, we might lose out again, like we did on the other truck.
I, I think we could use them, or we could still prepay, if we can prepay, we could still use the ARPA.
Sure, right, that's exactly, yeah.
Take care of it.
If there's no penalty for prepaying.
Our goal is committed, if we can, and someone committed, it's still going.
Right.
Alright, um.
One, I did have one other question, so there was a, you mentioned an interest rate that we're financing and on. Um should we check to make sure that's, we're financing it the right way, and that the best rate we could get? And if it's the dealer that's offering us the loan, is that really the best we could get?
I don't. Oof, I don't know what the other option would be, I mean, we could probably try to shop it around to a bank, but that's more time. We don't know what the rate would be, um I don't know if um any of the people who we've done financing with would do uh an item like this.
It seems like we're paying higher than used car rates.
It's a lease, lease rate, yeah, three point nine six.
Like, why are we paying a lease rate?
Because, correct me if I'm wrong, Neil, it's the lease would be the option to buy. You're, you're, you're leasing the balance up is what you're doing, correct Neil?
I think so, you did my fucking smart.
So it sounds to me like.
Well, to just to confirm, if this does move forward, it'll get titled immediately. The, the vehicle will be titled in the village from day one, you're just paying them over the term. You're not getting titled at the end of it, at the end of the lease term? Because you're gonna wanna make sure it's.
This is a lease purchase type of financing, after all the lease payments are made, Leasy will own the equipment without further cost. Uh it's a lease proposal, I don't know if that answered your question.
No, Andy, right here, type of lease, this is a lease purchase type of. It's, it says, "After all the lease payments are made, Leasy will own the equipment without further cost." Under type of lease, number two. So it's saying we don't get titled until after you've made all three, I would, that's what I would interpret it, either three or four years. I'm no financial guy either.
Where's Bobby Dakar?
Can we, can we? What, think this is a good idea, like, wait until we get to figure that out?
Oh certainly, I mean, what I've heard so far is that we need to make sure there's no penalty for payoff. We need to understand the details of this, and we need to confirm that the down payment is this fiscal year, and each year the payment is under those fiscal years, so we don't get hit with both the down payment and the first payment this year.
What are we looking to do tonight?
Uh either um a- approve this if we, if we wanted to move in that direction.
Approve this purchase.
But we could table it, and either, once we get the answers, we could either have a special meeting in a couple of weeks, or put it off until the August meeting, and fingers crossed, it would still be there tomorrow.
Can we approve it pending review of financing terms?
Andy?
Uh my suggestion would be get the answers to these things, and then if the answers are good, like in a week, just to have a quick special meeting, put it online.
I, I'm.
That would be fun.
Go with Andy's recommendation.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so then we will get, uh track down these answers, these questions, and um hopefully in a week or two, we'll have a special meeting either online or in person um to move on this. Neil? Does that work? Whatever, uh preference on three year or four year, guys? Deferred it to Neil and Kenny?
Just pay more interest.
I'll talk to uh Neil and Kenny and see what you guys would prefer, whether it's three year or four year.
Four years is the same, same rate, so.
Same, same rate, you're talking two thou- you're talking a hundred and six eight versus a hundred and eighty eight, so you're talking two thousand dollars more for two, another year.
Uh, when you put it that way, I'm, I'm good with that other year.
The four, the four years is a hundred and eight thousand eight seven eight versus one six eight.
That's where we get the, we'll get the answers to those questions, and we'll have that for next meeting. So I'm looking, uh, we don't have anything to table, because we don't have this as an item, I think I had this later. Yeah, sorry about that, okay. Uh next item. Um we have a proposed draft intermunicipal agreement for an electric vehicle charging station. This was something that was brought to us by Ken Lorenz, uh who's been spearheading this, and he has um been working with the town on this. The location that was the most uh ideal was the village lot right behind Trusco. Neil met with town, Ken, whoever, and they have a good location for it. Um Andy has been working on this, uh and he got the draft um agreement to us, I looked through it and I thought it was brilliant. Assuming you guys are good with it, the next step in the process is he would send that over to the town attorney. Town attorney would give comments, and probably the next meeting in um, what's the next month, August, jeez. The town and the village would be set to uh a- approve that, did you guys have any comments, questions, thoughts, concerns? I'm a hundred percent all for it, I love the idea.
Yeah, we do, and it's efficient to it being made, it's.
Yeah.
It's um, it's gonna bring people, make people stop in Huesick Falls.
Yeah, the way it was explained to me is that they, there's, I guess, a GPS or a program that basically tells you where all the charging stations are. So once it's here, it will show up, and when people are driving, you know, Route seven towards Vermont, they can pull off in Huesick Falls and get charged back up, and then stop by, and do all of our local eating establishments at the same time, order everything, and then go on their way. So uh that's where we have, if you guys have any comments, I guess send them to Andy, otherwise we're full speed ahead to send those to the town. Town, did you wanna add anything? You guys are good from your end.
You gotta share in the cost of that too, right?
What's that?
You sharing the cost of that?
Sharing the cost.
Sharing the cost.
I don't.
I think it was like forty, fifty.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I don't think that was the uh, the plan.
Sharing the cost with who, with you and Ken Lorenz?
Not under the current draft.
Not under the current draft, no.
No cost, no cost, no problem.
Yup. Good, good initiative, town, awesome. Alright, um Andy, um can you provide the update regarding solid waste management local laws?
At your last meeting, there, there was some discussion about containers being placed out at front, uh staying out at the front, being on porch. And so, you directed me to review the status of the local laws that the village has on solid waste, uh we call it the umbrella, solid waste management. So, the first local law that we could discover, thank you for presenting it over, was nineteen eighty-nine, okay? This primarily addressed the operation of what was termed under the local law, your solid waste collection and disposal site. Required a permit, what types of waste could be brought, there was a section on recyclables that couldn't be mixed with solid waste, they could be handled separately. So it was really all dealing directly with the operation of your, was it a transfer station? Yeah, the transfer station. That there's permits, there's a deed for the permit, Woods Court issued those, uh limited just to village and town residents, and that's how it worked. And there were some penalties if you did not follow it. But that was the extent of the local law. But there was an amendment in nineteen ninety-two that established an annual pickup fee of a hundred and thirty-two dollars, I don't know what the current status of of that is. Uh now in nineteen ninety-three.
Sixty dollars, twenty, yeah.
Yeah, in nineteen ninety-three, there was another amendment, and this one did include a provision, a couple of new provisions. And this is maybe what you were talking about, but in my opinion, the language is kind of loose. It added a provision that said, "It shall be a violation of this local law for any person to cause to be thrown, dumped, deposited, or placed solid waste or recyclable material on the porches, front lawns, or driveways of public or private property within the village." That's probably what you recall. Now, is it particular to a container, is it particular to number of containers? Not yet, it was just that generic provision that you couldn't throw, deposit, or place solid waste or recyclables on the front porch, on the front lawn, or in the driveway. And likewise, it was a violation with potential penalties associated with that. All of this was then, if you will, recodified in nineteen ninety's, or straightened in two thousand and six, kind of restated the law again. This time, there was a definition of container added, and this was the sixty-six gallons, two thirty-three gallon containers. But the local law added a definition, but it didn't change any of the substantive provisions of the law. So it didn't change that, you know, place, deposit, dump, store, solid waste. It doesn't reference number of containers on a porch or the driveway, or next to the, the front lawn, next to the road. And that's the last local law that we could find, dealing with solid waste management within the village. So, this may fall under the category of, we've talked about having a committee to review the status of current local laws, there's some that have been proposed. What priority should they be reviewed by the board? This may be one of them that you may wanna review, if there's a particular intent to have a, a clearer, um kinda more direct local law dealing with the number of containers, how they need to be stored, if it's within a fenced area or enclosure, what the penalties would be, if I think that, how it would be enforced, that's something we can look at. Again, your current laws from two thousand and six, and it only has that general language about not placing, depositing, storing, or disposing of solid waste on the front porch, the front lawn, or the driveway.
So, spearheading off of that, one of the things that I've been wanting to do is get a bunch of meetings started and a lot of groups started. We have our first Woods Brook meeting actually tomorrow, that we're gonna start talking through and planning um that over the summer and fall, to make sure that the um, the demolitions for those properties happen in a timely manner, and get everything moving on that. Um we had set up this uh past organizational meeting, uh a local law uh committee, Deb, you were a part of that. And was Emily a part of that, or Kevin, were you a part of that? I think it was Emily who was on that as well, she's no longer here. Uh what I wanna do is I wanna get us to meet with Andy, we have talked through probably ten or twelve different things we've kind of looked at as we should look into.
Yes.
Codifying that.
At this point, there's probably on the order of a half a dozen or eight that have been drafted.
Yeah.
And, and ready to be reviewed and potentially introduced and reviewed.
So I'd like just to get started and basically review all the ones we've talked about, make a priority list, and start working on those. And that would be you and I, and I would look for one more trustee if anyone wants to hop in on that, if not, that's okay. Megan, are you interested?
I think the, I think the other thing was part in the cars and parking areas, that they find the properties.
That's probably, I think, in my mind, that's our top priority, is redoing the park laws, because we've had so many issues and so many discussions about that.
So what we did when we were first retaining the building, uh, because the building, a lot of municipalities have formal code book, that continually updating so everything's together, and we don't have that here, so. I, I have all of the effective local laws from the Department of State website. You adopt a local law, what the terms generally are, they become effective upon filing with the Department of State. Uh and so they're all on file, and they're all electronically available, uh but that only goes back to nineteen ninety-eight, so we have all of that. That's when I reviewed the solid waste laws, the eighty. No, they could ninety-eight, they, they could go back to, the eighty-nine one we could not find, and I already have the ones from ninety-two and ninety-three. So, we have all of those, they should be reviewed, and in there, there's a number of ones that discreetly had parking restrictions on these roads and on that street, and probably a good idea to go through and collate them, all of the various parking restrictions, signage, four-way stop signs, two-way stop signs, see where all that is, and see what the village wants to do.
Yeah, now, um if you're on the state level, if you wanna put a driveway in front of your house, or in your house, when you turn that. Yeah, now, um if you're on the state level, if you want to put a driveway in front of your house or in your house, you need to curb that. And you can apply to state where, in our case, we don't, we have anything.
Well, that's something else. If the village is intent on that, you should absolutely pursue the need for a village driveway permit before having any kind of curb cut in the village on the street.
And I think that.
I would heart use those for.
Right, and then just leave by the eyes of the department.
Yeah.
And then whether it's too close to the uh the edge of the road, so people can't see around the cars, that kind of thing.
Yeah. A lot of municipalities also have a problem is you cut in a new driveway, it's on a bit of a slope. And then all of the runoff, particularly during the winters, looking out to the public room, you have freezing problems. So you gotta have a back pitch on the driveway, that's all we do, but I have a requirement in the driveway permit application, it's something that can be addressed as well.
All right, so um so we're gonna, we'll schedule a meeting, I'll try to get this out. This week, we'll schedule one, maybe for next week i- if we can, based on your availability and Andy's. And we'll start uh throwing it to you, all these wonderful draft laws for light reading. That's great. All right, couple quick project updates. I already mentioned that the Woodsbrook buyout program, uh we're gonna have our meeting tomorrow to start sort of talking about that. We were actually hoping, we had discussed two properties in detail, one fifteen Main Street, which is the uh one that has the caution tape around it, the foundation is collapsing. I had hoped to be able to present to us a resolution tonight, accepting it from the county. Uh unfortunately, that is not quite, wasn't it up transpiring. The county uh seemed to have been in a holding pattern, waiting to hear, and they for some reason thought, I think they had thought, that we wanted to try to go through the final sale with him, but we, the the value of the house versus the amount of back taxes is not close. And that it's basically, at this point, I think we're gonna be another month before we can get that from the county. That's about some, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um so hopefully, that's something that we get to acquire in a month from the county um and tear down because that is a very unsafe structure and the only, I think the only reason we've waited this long to address it is because it would be coming down from Woodsbrook Fund, state state grant funds. Uh the other property is one fourteen Church Street. That's the three-floor apartment building that's boarded up on the corner of uh Church and Hall. We actually got to take a look into that. We were pleasantly surprised at the um the the structure and the interior. There was a couple issues and Mark was able to get in there um and give us a tour. We initially were targeting that in the buyouts. There is a party who we have spoken to who has said they are interested in that if it were ever to go back up to sale. We have heard conflicting things from the county on whether that party is or isn't involved. So um at this point, we just kind of have to make our final decision and go with it. If we want to try to take that down through the grant program or if we're basically turning it back over to the county to see what happens. Andy, anything else you want to add to that?
Just to update the board, the the acquisition of all these properties was obviously through the grant program. We want to make sure that the village complies with grant program guidelines and and rules. And so we posed a question to uh the state Housing Community Rental contacts that we have today that want to confirm if the village does acquire the properties directly from the county rather than from the private homeowners, that that doesn't run afoul of any of the program rules. And that if the village does take title through the county, that it's still gonna be allowed in the state grant money for the demolition work. This is a home buyout program. It's through Housing and Community Mural. It's really earmarked toward private owners whose properties were damaged through the flood, uninhabitable, to be able to buy their properties and get them relocated. The one fifteen Main Street's a little different because of the back tax issue and the amount. As we learned today, I think it's still entitled to the private owner. The county has not formally taken title to that thing. It complicates the closing because of the amount of the back taxes and how that lien would have to be released that closely. So we're just, we've asked today the state for some guidance on those issues and that potentially pertains to one fourteen Church as well if you go in that direction. So we should have some more information.
Yeah, but it sounds like the board is okay with basically not moving forward on one fourteen Church. Rollin' the dice to see what happens, if it gets redeveloped or if it sits there.
So what's the process of go back, the county will put it back up for sale?
I put a call through to the county and didn't get one back today about that. My understanding would be it would be back on the auction, but I don't know.
Right, because the sign uh on the building right now, I went by it on the way here, it's still, it still has the auction.
The old auction date?
Of June date, yes.
Which it was pulled off of.
And I guess that's the next question, is what, when is the county's next auction date?
November.
November?
I think they could probably do it, couldn't they just do an auction? They have a kind uh choice of the auctions, there's auctions online. You would think that they could just put them back up.
That's what we're gonna ask and we haven't heard yet.
We've certainly been trying to court the county since the last meeting.
Yeah.
In a perfect world, it'd be better that we had the authority to put the property up and get proposals for the property and like in Troy, you have that for plan and how you're gonna execute it.
Yeah.
You have a year or two before you uh force take the bag and put any ads in the community. You'll have that option, I think.
So that's the update with uh the Woodsbrook buyout program, and we'll have a lot more next meeting after we've had a couple meetings and gotten things moving. Um in terms of the Woodsbrook upstream project um that we're doing with the town, uh this is the one where there's two sites that we focused on. We've been struggling, we've we've approved basically moving forward on things and putting the work out to bid, but we've been waiting to get all the permits. Ironically enough, we got the permits from the one site that we haven't been able to get the easements from. And the one site that we have gotten the easement from, we don't have the permits yet. So there's nothing really new to, for us to act on. We've already approved it going out for bid. Once the proper permits are in, we're just still waiting and working our channels. Mark, do you have anything to add to that? Yeah, so um that's another thing I'm gonna be focused on next week or two. Either rattling the cage to get the permit or um speaking with the uh the owners uh about possible easements. Um and the last thing, and and again, I'm sorry that the update portion has taken so long, but these are a lot of things that we as a board have been talking about and focused on. Just real briefly on COVID nineteen, Delta variant. You know, this is a, this is a very tricky topic. It's really nice that we're here in person. It's really nice that we can be for the most part mask free and feel pretty safe. And it's nice that um there have been a lot of people, myself included, who've been vaccinated. The Delta variant is very concerning because as you look at some of the countries where it has really um broken out, it is way more transmissible. There have been situations where people have been in a room for twenty to forty seconds, and that has been enough to pass uh COVID on to other people. It still seems to be, the science seems to point to vaccines are still holding strong, but vaccines and vaccines are making a big difference. But what we're seeing in this country right now is the states who have the lowest vaccination rates have seen an increase in cases, and a couple weeks later, they see the increase in hospitalizations. And typically, as it follows pattern, the increases in deaths will happen after that. It's been great to see we've had so few cases in the county and in neighboring counties. But if you look over the past week, they are starting to increase. So my only comments are, um you know, there are times where I'm still, even though I'm fully vaccinated, uh I will throw on a mask. Um I hope that people consider doing that, never are judging either way on that. Um and if you haven't gotten the vaccine, I would, from the point of public health, um you know, recommend uh doing so because I'm I'm interested to see how things progress over the next month, so that's all.
Rob, I just let the, let people know that at the Summer Cancer, which begins uh the Saturday, the Hunter County Vax Band will be there.
Oh, awesome.
And if people need their first dose or their second, I think they'll have them available at that night at the, at the match, from five thirty till uh eight thirty.
That's great to know.
Well, the Marra, the Johnson Johnson, and the.
Pfizer.
Pfizer.
Yep, that's great. That is great. Thank you. Thank you. All right, um that's it for my updates. Uh at this point, we are the people to be heard section. If you guys have something you want to share, we just ask that you share your name and your street address. We'll give you a few minutes, and just as a reminder, as I said before, meetings are recorded and posted online. Could I have an idea of who would like to share first? Would anyone like to share? One? Two? Okay. Would you like to go first? Thank you. You don't have to stand if you don't want to. You're fine to sit.
My name is Peter O'Fallon out of ninety-three High Street.
Ninety-three High Street.
And I have a hydrant out in front of my front yard, and it looks like crap because I've had a mic that I've now put in there for years. And I'd like to know why they can't put a new one in. When they just put a new one in up on Danvers Street, what about Albany Street, that I was not four years old. And a couple of my neighbors, I told them I was coming down here and they said, you're. And I'd like to know why. They said getting a runner on from the water bench.
Well, um I think I know the one you're speaking of. It's got the yellow thing over it and it's had it for four years.
I'm going to keep it a warm.
Okay. Um I know that we um, when we looked at the budget, we looked at uh fire hydrants, and I want to say they cost fifteen thousand each. Neil, do you remember how much? Ten thousand, fifteen thousand each? We had budgeted, I think, two new this year, plus we had two existing that we were going to install. I know we have more of a need than the four. I think we have more like six or seven, and we had two um that are either included or not included in that. How many years do you think yours has not?
Eight or four. I think it's about time they did something.
Well, I will look into this and see which ones need to be replaced and how long they have been. And um do we have a, do we have a contact number to reach back out to him? We'll, we'll get a contact number for you and we'll give you a call in a couple days.
One time they told me that they didn't have a hydrant, but it was not true because they had three of them and ran it ground out, ran it out. And then last week, then I see a truck come in here with three more no one's had. Well, he gives me the runner on. He tells me I have to see you, and you tell him I have to see him. No, no, no.
Come see us. You did the right thing. I hear you. I'm sorry about the inconvenience of four years of that bag. Uh let me get some more information and I'll get back to you.
And one other thing I like that, is nothing to do with, up on Church Street, Bo just moved, they moved, everybody moved in there and they got a great big truck parked outside the road. Bo built, big truck. Right up the end of Church, we turned it back down East Street.
It's at the point where Main and Church Street, you're right there. It's right there. It almost makes it up. One way now that 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 truck is parked there.
It just started doing.
Is it, oh, because that household and someone's living there and they're parking on the road and it's right.
There's tenants in that building now where their houses have been for the best.
And there's about four more vehicles parked there.
Um.
Is that just the old Matt Boyce Davis's house?
Yeah.
Something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will review that with code enforcement and with Neil. And uh let me see what I can figure out with that. That is probably gonna play into the need for for us to redo uh our parking laws. Um and with that would come signage and proper lines.
You might have a position to park a car. I can't park on our High Street.
Yeah.
No way that I can do that now.
I'll review that with code and and with a DPW. Anything else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not you, Mr. Martin?
I'm Jim Martin. I'm looking at twenty-four Church Street, Booth Falls. And I've got a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
One, um someone told me the other day that the police department's budget is down a couple hundred thousand dollars over the past five years. I'm just curious where that comes in the ballpark.
Not that I know of, Chief.
No, it's been staying, it's been staying.
What, it's been staying?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
It's um.
The thing is, it's it's increased.
A little bit each year.
Thirty percent or or less.
Give me a minute, because I know our recent budget documents had the the last few years built into. That's the way we've been designing the budget.
The actual expenses of out near the budget and expenses, maybe they were, maybe they got that information wrong.
It's possible, because we've budgeted higher sometimes, but it's if we, yes.
So so it's possible that you would refer to the two hundred thousand being the actual expenses?
Yes.
Okay.
Also keep in mind, this is all going back, at one time, there was a couple hundred thousand dollars that was in that budget that that covered the revenue. That has been hidden out for a while. I mean, it's been years, but.
Yeah, well, how long, how long since nine-one-one went in, right? I mean, that's.
Been a while, but I'm just saying.
But that's what you're talking about, right about.
So that's what Spence said, we don't know.
I can tell you, this year's budget for PD Everything was two hundred and fifty thousand. The previous year budget was two hundred and forty-five. If you look at the actuals, they 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 are a bit all over the place. So I could see them saying, wait a minute, if it was four years ago, a three hundred thousand actual for that year, for whatever reason, why is it less now? Yeah.
So the reason I'm asking, because uh you spoke about Johnson and Martin earlier.
Mm-hmm.
And you talked about the credit laws. I was hoping you would explain them on that because he is. And I think it's great that we're getting people to come back and stay here.
Yeah.
Put the part-time position, definitely keep the guy that you have. I don't think, I, listen, I hope I'm wrong, but but I don't think they.
Well, we, a couple of years ago, hired our first two part-time, or full-time officers. One of them moved away uh to a different position. He's back as a part-time, and we have one full-time. So there's nothing out of the realm of possibility of hiring more full-time officers. Always a board decision, but that's something we did start a couple of years ago.
I think the reform board has been thinking about this question, which is really good because there's a purpose, more research on the on the cost of um parking and how we can better serve the community with additional officers, et cetera. One of the problems is it's not just us, but all, um Troy Police is down eighteen, eighteen police officers. They tested like eighty police, well, eighty tentacle candidates and came up with what they think is true. So the people that are, they're not interested in the work for a variety of reasons. Another, one of the bigger reasons is um some of the people jumping from cities, going into other other cities. Pay is a little bit different. And my calls are a little bit different. So there's a lot of factors that the, that the board has to think into.
Good. I I think, yeah, I think you have to, it's like anybody else now, you have to pay even more to to get there. And it's just, it's just the way business is right now.
Yeah.
And they're walking up, they're walking up on cars and getting going, and I know it's a little volatile, but it's a matter.
No, I, I know, and um.
Doesn't mean anymore. No, you have to pay what's worth to do it.
Yeah, it it was, you know, when I started uh as mayor, one of the first things we did was we increased pay on a lot of the um salaried employees. When we renegotiated the last contract, um there were two things we did. We did do pay increases, but we also switched their retirement from the old weird version to the same retirement that all the other police departments in New York State use. And that was a big thing that they wanted, so we have worked to make things more attractive, without question.
Our whole line of uh in seriousness of of the crime, there's a reason as well. Like in the details, we're working very closely with the state police in the midst of that curve. Outside of the, until the ten, a lot of activity was resulting from this police department is providing. So we're also working with um Spence and police with some additional cases that are coming up, so. I agree with you. We think we should always use additional manpower, but more importantly, is to keep them here. And I know Marie's part of that, we're looking at, I think, two more individuals that we are interested to the village to hire. They couldn't go to this upcoming basic school, but they're gonna be going to the genuine basic school. So we're hoping to put two to four people in, and they're local as well, into the non-basic.
They're hoping for time.
Well, we're dictated by civil service, and that's the problem, they haven't given out civil service exam. So that's the other, the one that we're up against here. Hire a full-timer. We have to follow civil service restrictions, and right now, if we hire someone off that list, we have to send them to that basic school. That means we're in a paying six months salary. The program that we have, which is working, it's worked in the past, and now we're reinstating this, they go on in the meantime. So going to college, that's how I said it, you're going to college for six months, you're coming out, and you're coming to us part-time. But take that test and we can, we can.
Right, we're.
We're.
Bob, Chief, I, you said the um state police are helping out. What's a little bit of sheriffs department? How many resources and people that you, that can help us out too?
They are too. There are some additional meetings that are that are around, that are gonna be scheduled here that we've been working with in the past. We're gonna be, have these meetings a little more frequently as soon as things calm down a little bit with state meetings right now, something else we're working on. So hopefully, in the next couple of months, some additional meetings are going to be had. We've had, you you're gonna see an increase. We've had, you, you're gonna see an increase in state police in the village, um, and that's based on a, a number of situations that we have worked with. So, we're gonna, you're gonna see a lot, a few more patrols of the state police in the village, um, for our purposes.
And the sheriff's department as well, or just the state police?
The, the sheriff's department as well. This is a specialized unit in the state police that are coming in this.
Thank you.
We have a lot, a lot of problems. It's coming, it's at, um, seven quarter. That's coming in from Vermont into, into the town and into Shore. And they're starting to utilize the back roads up onto Brooklyn and that way too. So, we go a little bit of a spittle and they're starting to see, the other areas are starting to see that there's an increase in that, that they're gonna have to start. I hate, I know Mark doesn't wanna, wanna hear say this, but if we went to a town with PD, probably see additional funding.
Oh, oh.
And I only say that because, um, one of, we'll talk about in a few minutes is the grants that we're in. Because of the size of, of our PD, um, we're not eligible for grants, so we're working with the sheriff's department on some additional grants that their assistance with, that's gonna provide body cameras to us that we're all gonna have.
We're like halfway through the police report. I mean, this is great.
There ain't no twostores.
No grants for new police cars?
We're looking, we, we, I've written to some of our congressmen and some of our senators and asked them for some help. Neil, you have a beautiful building here, so I was wondering if you could find some additional assistance with this.
Jim, did you have anything else?
Yes, uh, one, I agree wholeheartedly with you, are going townwide. I think that's a great idea. All the way around. But I'm gonna follow up with, uh-
Yeah.
Uh, my thought, a couple of months ago regarding the different issues that the board have encountered. I, I'm primarily concerned, I, I mainly concern those tanks, because I, everyone thinks they're dangerous and I, I wanna know what's happening. And, and, and what is the type of, what do you expect to happen there?
Mark?
Uh, preliminary, uh, response from the expert that we, that we've been discussing. Uh, based on the information that I provided and he's in Pennsylvania, is that, uh, everything seems to be up to code. But he has served the right for a, uh, you know, a formal say, I guess. Uh, he's decided that he really needs to do an onsite, um, look.
Okay.
And we have that potentially scheduled for next Wednesday afternoon. And I think then after that, you know, he'll be, uh, kind of prepared to, uh, give us his, uh-
And will I be able to inspection? No, I would prefer.
Uh, I can let you know what I, I know, I just right now it's kind of disorganized.
So, do we not have, forget, forget about the tank right now, do we not have a five, five-foot? What's that for people, for shopping on the market, five-foot on the market line?
For, do we have one for-
For those who have required.
For like an accessory structure or, or accessory structure or if they, you get it, it was kind of like, uh, I'm not specific to different areas. I have to look at it closer to see, uh, in the area that usually, um, a building, a building permit is obtained as well as a gap for accessory structures.
Accessory, maybe mobile?
Uh, not necessarily. Accessory structures, I know I was gonna find here, but that shed, um, you know, something like that would be accessory structures.
So, this is not?
The tanks, I don't see that as an accessory structure.
Kind of generally, there are buildings or structures that are subordinate to, but there's an actual to the primary structure on the line. So, it's usually the code requirement, building or structure, and that's really the building permit. Underground tanks generally not.
Well, I'm not, I'm not talking about the tank.
Mm-hmm.
No, I'm talking about those split tanks that were-
Well, correct. It, it's dependent on how building or structure is defined in the, throughout the code.
So, it is possible that you could put, from what I'm hearing initially, it's, it's possible that you could put these propane tanks on someone's property line just over one, and that's okay.
No, that, that, you've heard a subject check.
Right, no, I understand.
But we'll reduce that.
Plus, oh.
The first issue was the safety issue with, um, the actual tanks themselves. And that's, that's why, um, it was advisable to write to an expert, give you a master story. And that's what Mark's pointing at, that's who would be coming to the site once.
Excellent, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we will, uh, move on. We've already closed the public hearing. Let's go into our reports.
We have motions from that public hearing and we have to take that.
We already closed the pub, oh, we, we, we closed the public hearing and later in new business, we have the two resolutions regarding that. That's, um, the third, the third group in page three. I hope that's not me. Oh, that's not me. I'm parked right there. We would know if it was me. Okay. Um, Chief, do you wanna go check that out?
Yeah.
That would be awkward. All right, all right, so let's go on to reports. Um, I know Trusty Decker is normally the one who speaks to, um, the treasurer's report. Is there anything you guys want to comment or ask about? If not, um-
It is the van that parked directly in front of it.
I guess hope.
Do you want us to do, you want us, do you wanna hang in? About a couple of times a week I do that with the keys in my pockets. Um, so Denise has the treasurer's report. Bob Decker's usually normally the one who speaks, uh, through this. Anything you guys wanna ask about or comment on the treasurer's report? Do you have a copy of the reports? Okay. Um, if not, I will accept the motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Make my motion out.
Thank you, Craig.
Second.
Thank you. Bobby, any further discussion or any other questions? All right, um, all in favor of approving treasurer's report? Aye?
Aye.
Opposer's sentience? All right. Kerry, police report. Chief, I know we've already talked through like half of it, but, uh, take it away.
Uh, quick, um, the number of calls for June were a hundred and forty-one, calls for Maine were a hundred and thirty-one, so we dropped forty down. Uh, calls for the year eight hundred and five, the rest for June were eight, and twelve for the year is forty-eight. Uh, domestic and EMS continue to, uh, pick up a lot of our time. The domestics are twenty-five, EMS are eighteen. And if you notice, we started dropping it on the paperwork, uh, just to show you the mental health cases that were handling. Um, there were six of them that we, we, uh, still, you know, started on.
And also if any trustee wishes to, to view the, the, uh, cases in detail, uh, please get up on me. I keep these here so we can review them. Something we have to do inside the office, cause some of it is confidential. I may need to tell me if it's not, so I'll make that available for you.
The arrests were for criminal mischief, arson, driving while intoxicated, we contend with court. As I said earlier, um, we're working with county sheriff's department for body cameras. Uh, we've submitted for four body cameras. Uh, we'll know hopefully in a couple of months if we've been approved within their grant. Um, if we have, then we just need some additional computer work that's, you know, the cost that would be set up. I know the mayor's talking about some more work that's being done in the department or in our offices for computers and such, so we'll be working the hard, uh, wire for that. Um, also, I've sent a letter to the district attorney's office. There was a conversation between the past about some monies that might be available for evidence. Um, preservation benefits, et cetera, so what I asked for them is to take a look at possibly equipping our cars with, uh, cameras in cars and that kind of thing to look at a grant that we might be able to win or then receive some money for that. I know President Biden has spoken, not in detail, but has spoken about making somewhat more monies available for, um, villages and towns and cities out of the police departments. So, Andy, I don't know if there's something that you would have to look into or the mayor could look into that? Did you see, qualify or something like that before I started trying to get the grants or something like that?
It's under that act that was just-
The ARPA funds?
The, the ARPA funds have a category for public safety staff. I'm not sure that includes-
I, I-
They've been talking about how we're gonna be changing this up a little bit and making more money available. Oh, I think that's potentially one of the things coming out of this final rule on-
Yeah.
Clearly, public safety is one of the categories that those federal monies can be used for. I think the final rule says exactly on what you're saying.
Yep.
I just don't wanna lose out on something that might be covered by, that you might be aware of. Uh, the village has been ordered a certain amount of money of ARPA funds. That's not money you'll lose. So, once that funding is, is there and there's clear rules on how it can be spent, that'll get it to the board. The, the money's there.
Okay.
I didn't see the rules on what you can-
I didn't know what it's named additional money on copper, what it's gonna be worth or what possibly we got it. Um, Unity House is, uh, also looking at funding. Um, they're looking at bringing us in on some possible tasks. They may, they may, we don't know, so I wouldn't look at Unity House. Some of the thoughts, they're growing out of their space, I think, high with the armory. Um, and so we're, they might be looking at some additional space or, or wherever, where, where you are with that. Um, and I know the county is also, uh, we did, uh, county vote here, it was a difficult one. I think that, I think that's sort of, I think that, I had a lot of implications, it's one of them. Um, I met with the county mayor before, uh, this meeting. I think it's July twenty-seventh, sending me a, a letter out from the mayor and also to you, Mark, uh, because we were asking about possibly having you guys handle needs too, because there's some, uh, some things that they are still looking at, bringing up here to the town. Um, some resources that they wanna provide up here, um, and I felt it was important that the mayor and supervisor we brought in on the conversation before they, they go too far over a gray line. And I know Kevin mentioned, mentioned the, uh, the, uh, the back, the back end, and that's something that they wanted to talk about, bring it up. Um, additional time, so I've been wanting to, to kind of, so there's a lot of few things that are going on with that part of it. Hopefully I can get a clear reporting on these things on next month. And the only other thing is, I, I, I say this because I'm getting a lot of questions. There's a case that's going on, just patience. That's all I ask, is patience. Um, it's under control. I just have patience with it.
Any questions for the chief?
No.
I'm just wondering, Becky, when you turned it to me twice, I think I had a little way.
That was some signs that we found that, that threw in the garbage, but they gave it away to an apartment and they brought it back that, the dead and then they made it back to the garbage.
All right. Looking for a motion to approve the police report?
Motion, second.
Uh, further discussions? All in favor? Aye? Opposer's sentience? All right, Kerry. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Code enforcement floor, Mark?
Uh, yeah, Neil just told me I have to do it short, so.
All right.
If, if, if this is what you're there, uh-
If you wanna include townwide police, feel free.
Yeah. If there's, I mean, anybody have any questions about anything, uh, for the most part, we highlight itself as recent changes to, you know, status and, and how it's unfolding. Besides that, I don't think there's, you know, I've pretty much kept everybody, when the situation comes up, I, I pretty much include everybody so that you're aware of what's going on, uh, most recently the Troy Street situation. I did meet today with, uh, uh, Mike Bacon representing the owner, uh, did some work for them. The, uh, contract was there, changed for the box. Um, and the insurance adjusted their, their memory and engineer and, um, next Friday, I can assure you this coming. But I think it's pretty good that that house is in a serious condition because, uh, it did, the house did move.
Wow.
So, structurally, there's even more of an issue than what, uh, so.
I saw people in the house on Sunday.
They're moving. They're in the process of moving out. It's not unsafe to be in there, I don't think. You know, it's not a bad house. But, long-term, the whole house moved a, a, a little bit and the foundation from the forest of that. Now, Mike could tell me that, I think that he said that piece of tree that he lifted off the house was, is it twenty-two or twenty-six hundred pounds? He's able to weigh it with his crane. So, it was a pretty solid chunk of tree that remained on the house that we need to go on.
Yeah. Wow. All right.
That took a right on, on Lyman Street, where they took the garage down.
Yes.
The garage that they took down.
Was it Water Street?
Water Street. Um, when it, when I went down there, I don't know if it's the same place or not, but they had like four cars in the property, two Vermont plates. It looked like, not even, it's not the same one.
No.
Right down that same street, there's a property with a bunch of, uh, cars out there.
Cars and trailer, camper?
Yeah, there's a whole bunch. There's at least four cars and one camper.
Are they all in the driveway or are they on the lot?
There's no driveway. It's, uh, parking on the neighbor's lot. The neighbor happened to be that same marshal guy that was at the building and we can't get, we can't get in touch with him. So, they just started using his lot. Only guy doesn't buy the lot, but they can't, can't get a response. So, I just invited today and they'll set the, there's a lot of vehicles there. There's a camper, a vehicle that, that goes to one house and then, uh, a number of vehicles go to the other house. I mean, nobody's cutting them.
Yeah, it's a change, they've done some nice improvements on that street.
There hasn't. I agree.
Well, thank you guys for your Water Street demo. Seemed to go off about a hit.
Yeah, I, I would have stepped up on that and just, something changed on that and all of a sudden it was, it had been an issue, but it was, became more of an issue and it was close to leaning into the neighbor's house. So, we needed to act quickly on that and, uh, and Neil and his guys are messing the job. No damage was done to any structure and they were pretty close. So, and we got on it and we're on, we're on, we're just getting on the ground.
Awesome. Any other questions for Mark?
I'm just gonna leave that. I know it, they, you tore it down. You have, you have a coverable, red, you know, a yellow caution tape, right?
Just to drive across the driveway.
Right. Are, are they gonna just leave, you're gonna just leave it there or is it gonna have?
Right now, it's really, it's, uh, it's the property ownership responsibility.
Right, oh, I understand.
And we just, uh, we took care of the situation that needed to be dealt with.
Okay.
Okay.
Did the, that old street park come down?
No.
Uh, just got the building permit application for that today. They sent it, they said they, they came here fast. They said they sent it, they called me before I came in and they said they sent it a couple of weeks ago. Uh, but for some reason, I don't know what's going on, if there's something on the patch chain or whatever, the patch just literally came through today and re-issued it to me.
Yeah?
So, uh, I, you know, I'm in the process of, uh, processing that building permit. Uh, but there is, there's more of a story to that, because you're aware that, uh, there's a connection back to Mr. Lee and that whole situation on that property.
Wow.
Just so you're aware.
All right.
And then two, just two other quick things. I know you're one of the, big crack, um, it's on, um, the gallery on John Street. The big crack in the window, still there?
Uh, yeah, I have to follow up with a second notice of violation, which, uh, I, I have a few things I have to give out there. I just gotta get back to you. He has been, he's been issued a notice of violation.
Yeah, he's a, I know. Um, the other thing is on Adams Street, and I, the, the, cross the street for me, but on my section of the block. There's somebody, we've done their parking in, uh, on the front lawn. He's got a truck, a dead truck, a, a formerly a bomb squad truck. He's got a camper for sale and, and, um, a dumpster that's been there for at least two or three weeks.
Um, yeah, I would have to say that has to be, uh, no, I, I get it. It's, uh, I, I have sent them violations before and they usually will take care of them. I have not, anything. I'm not sure what I would violate right now there, but, you know, I mean, it's, it's open. It's really not a lot.
People have gone to ask questions here, probably thinking, wow, dude, like this house, that dude. Anyway, just, you know, it's-
Yeah, well, I, I'm aware of it. Yeah. Well, I, I'm aware of a lot of, uh, to you to see what, anything I can do.
All right. Any, uh, any questions? Looking for a motion to approve? Code enforcement report?
Motion.
Craig?
Second.
Bobby? I like this, uh, this approach. This rhythm's working well. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, Carrie. Clerk, deputy clerk report. Maria, anything you want to highlight?
Uh, no, I think it's all there, property taxes, they're coming or processing crazy like, and, yeah.
Yeah.
Doing everything else.
All right. Any questions? If not, I'll take the motion. Probably from Craig. Ands?
Second.
Second from Bobby. There we go.
The only question I, you, you don't have community service on here or it's on our report list?
Oh, I forgot to add it back into the agenda. I will, uh.
I just wanted to.
Thank you. Thank you.
I know it's going to resume again, so that's why I want to make sure people.
All right, I'll come back to that.
Okay.
So we have the motion to approve the clerk deputy clerk report. Uh, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carrie's. Um, we spoke last meeting about community service. We were interested in seeing it return to action if and when it could. Um, I spoke with Jerry. Jerry spoke with the court. Community service has begun.
Yay.
Uh, he actually started it this week, I think. So I think it probably was, the first time was today. And he's starting right now at two days a week, Tuesday and Sundays. He knows what's going on, um, and the court knows what's going on. So that has started up. Next month we'll have a actual report.
Cool. Okay.
Thank you for catching that. Appreciate that. Uh, highway DPW report, Bobby?
Oh, so, yeah, well, Neil has been busy.
True.
Um, of course, I have Neil. What did you say regarding the chips? Um, I just, I wanted to ask you about the chips. What's the, when's that going to start?
I talked to a guy yesterday and I talked to him today, and he wants to meet firm, so it may be, you know, a lot of getting in the office.
When, what, you give me, you give me a call, sure. Okay.
Yeah, I don't want to get with that many without.
Sure. No, 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 I understand. No, I just, I know that it's coming up, that's all. And it's primarily over on Clay Hill area, correct?
Yeah, it's certainly maybe Clay Hill.
You're working with the town on that, correct? On the Hampton Street, some Dundee and?
Yeah, and we have some extra cash in south of that part of south, top of some smaller streets and stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Neil also did, uh, the preliminary work for how we had discussed the dog park potential.
Cross the street here?
Neil's got it, yeah, Neil's got it marked off already. Um, estimate, ballpark estimate, right, Neil, fifteen, around fifteen hundred for the materials. And just so everybody understands, I mean, we're, and, and I know Colony sent us their, their, you know, model of what they do. We're not quite in that budgetary situation as Colony, so, I mean, we're going to start out, you know, just with the bare minimum.
Yeah.
And then see what type of, you know, what type of usage the park gets.
Yep.
And then go from there. And if, you know, if we could start skipping usage, we can enhance the, the possibility, but.
All that.
Right now it's going to be, what did we say, Neil? It's approximately fifty yards by thirty-three yards, is that right?
Yeah.
Something like that.
So have we vetted out the liability issues and such like that, that we're putting, if somebody gets bit by a domestic dog in our dog park? Are we all good with that and everything?
First, first question is, if it moves forward, you got to coordinate with your.
Insurance carrier.
Because this is not unusual and that's the first step, is making sure the terrier is aware of, if there's any particular policies that are required for liability coverage.
We did that already?
Yeah, I thought we did.
We did. Yeah, you're fine under what we have.
Right, that's right. I knew, I knew we discussed it back, back away a while ago, so. Yeah, yeah, I remember, I remember we had a conversation where he was going to check into it. I knew that, so.
All right.
But that's where we're at. And so when Neil gets the materials, will we start just to get, break the ground and. Get, we'll figure out the signage we need to have and, and everything and, uh.
Great.
We're going to have, Neil, a couple of gates, correct? Like one for the entrance for the dogs and another for the entrance for the.
Use of equipment.
Use of equipment.
And he's doing the cleaning up.
Well, the, the, the dog owners will be going to clean it up.
Okay.
Well, they're going to be there.
There's, there's going to be cameras set up.
There'll be cameras.
Oh, okay.
We don't can't pick it up.
Right.
I can't pick it up.
We don't, it's located, so the availability of cameras, okay, trail cameras there, so. And the other thing is, you know, we will monitor it and the, the, the thing is, we're not going to put down grass. That's, they clearly state like in the colony, they, they recommend you don't put grass down. You put down like a, what do you call it, Neil, uh, some kind of.
Stone.
Stone dust. So that's easily clean, easily to pick up and, you know, easy to clean up and easy to maintain. You don't have to worry about a dog digging a hole and, and digging up the grass and having to replace that and, you know, and they kill the grass anyway. So.
Great.
But it's, it's in progress and we get farther down the road, where we, hopefully next month, we can say at this time, Neil will come and see it, so. If everything goes well, right, yeah?
Yeah.
And supposedly the, Neil's highway report, the spectrum is supposedly coming to look over by August thirteenth.
Don't know which year.
I'm not going to, I wasn't going to put that part.
I had to include it. It was too good of a line. Yeah, hypothetically, a month from now, we'll have the internet in this building, hypothetically.
To the public board members if we have a meeting here, so we can actually access it.
Yeah. Now that, like, we have to get the internet in here first, and then once we have our IT person, we'll get them to install a wireless access point. So we'll have our own access to it. And Neil and his crew as well. Yep. Uh, also Neil, Neil votes for parking laws to be addressed first. Anything else?
Yeah, well, the other thing, one thing that I do want to mention is that in, in one of Neil's, Neil's last statements, is that he put out a smolder campfire down on the greenway.
Yeah.
That, you know, is, once again, the greenway is there for people to use, but it's not there for the people to abuse. And Neil's not, shouldn't be having to go down and be the enforcer and finding and picking up after these people who went down there. You know, I mean, if people see people down there who aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Call.
Call nine one one and call the police and.
Please.
Drive down there because we want to make sure we keep the greenway the way it is.
Yeah.
For the purpose of people walking, running and riding their bikes, not going down there and, you know.
Having a party and.
Having a party and drinking on the riverbank and leaving their trash and dirty diapers and everything down there, which are found there on a regular basis, so.
Yep.
It's, it's frustrating.
All right. Um, anything else?
Melt that shit, do it.
Unless you have a question, I'll take a motion to approve the highway report.
Motion.
Thank you, Craig.
Kevin already got second.
Got Kevin.
Kevin.
Kevin got the second, thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carrie's. Sue report. Um, I, I adjusted the breakdown. I started doing breakdowns so that we could compare things year to year. Um, a couple of years back when I started kind of, um, putting all the reports in one document. I've adjusted it again this time. I hope it makes sense, um, so that each year we have it, we can see sort of how our income and our gallons are being delivered or, or, um, appearing. So it has a slightly different appearance. I'm hoping it's a little bit cleaner and easier to understand, but it's supposed to be broken down in years. Um, otherwise, I don't think anything in particular stands out. Um, anybody want to ask question or comment on it? If not, um, we have a good start to, um, the income for gallons delivered. I'll take a motion to approve the sewer department reports.
Hi.
Motion.
I have a crazy bug fly by.
Oh, you've seen that bug? And second, thank you, Bobby. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Carrie's. Thank you. And finally, the water department report. Normally Emily is the one who does this. Craig, I think.
Yep. That's you. Today, so we talked over a few things.
Great.
He did go through the hydrop replacements after they were flushed. There are two that needed to be replaced after flushing that weren't working. Um, he did mention that what's not in here, there's a third pump, a renselet pump, uh, water station has been brought back online. Apparently there was.
Okay.
For a while. And he wanted to talk, make sure we talk about the flushing of well three, which is on our.
The flushing of well three? Or the well seven?
Well seven.
Well seven, yep. That'll be coming up. That'll be coming up. All right. Any questions? I'll take a motion to approve. Water report? Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Deb. All in favor? Aye. Opposed or abstentions? Carrie's great. The minutes we have for approval tonight are the June eighth regular meeting minutes. Are there any additions, changes, comments? If not, I will take a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion needs, captain has presented.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Craig, for the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed or abstentions? Carrie's. All right, trustee committee reports. We'll start on this side. Craig?
Um, only water department conversation in the agenda, so he is anxious to begin flushing as soon as we get the group.
Well seven, yeah. And we'll be talking about that in a bit. Um, and I, I actually was over there yesterday. Um, there's a dehumidifier in the normal part of the plant that had been down when it's operating and things are dehumidifying.
The fire suppression system also we mentioned has been brought back.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, I was like, oh, what's wrong with there? All right, thank you, Kevin.
Um, still working with state, but they, I think they came through to get the cross blocks, but they still, uh, forgot to do the striking of the parking spots on Route twenty-two, which is their responsibility. So I got to call back to them. Neil's aware and hopefully we can get that done.
Okay.
Also working, we gave them a list of, uh, street signs that fell down on Route twenty-two and they soon should be fixing those as well. We're coming out, either cutting off the stems or replacing the signs themselves.
Okay. That's great. Um, next, uh, consent in the park?
Saturday, weather permitting, from eight thirty to five thirty, eight thirty.
And this band is, what's, what's the name of this band, Kevin?
Who's House Walkers?
Can you, can you shoot me a text tomorrow and I'll, I'll throw it, um, as a reminder to, to share it up on the village Facebook page so people have it?
Sure.
Awesome. Thank you.
I think, uh, the sex on fires works.
Yeah.
Oh, Rorx? The Rorx?
The Rorx are all being taught, so.
Oh, wow. Oh, no, they're going to neighbors.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Kevin? Awesome. Thank you, Kevin. Bobby?
No, I'm good.
Deb?
I'm good.
Megan, I, I don't think you've done anything specific in the past twenty minutes, so. Thank you for being here. Awesome. All right, old business, uh, nothing new on the transfer station. We should probably, uh, add this to my list of meetings we need to plan out for, uh, next year. So I'm looking for a motion to table that so I can, once again, yell at myself about not taking care of that.
Motion second.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you. Craig, any further discussion on this? Thanks for begging. What's that?
Bobby, please tell me.
All in favor of, uh, tabling? All in favor of tabling? Aye?
Aye.
Any, uh, opposed or abstentions? All right. Okay, new business, well seven. So trustees, uh, in the emails I sent to you, it's attachment eight, and then there was another one that happened today. Uh, attachment nine, so here's the basic gist of this. We're currently operating off of well three, uh, while we wait to get the well seven rehab. This is sort of a regular maintenance item that has been postponed for a while because of the PFOA situation that we had. Uh, we had been running off of well seven primarily for the past probably five, four or five years, almost definitely. We've done some well three once from state rehabbed it and we're back on well three right now.
So this is the one that the governor promised would be fixed?
That's well three. That was the one. So we're, we're running off of that right now as we wait for well seven to, to get rehabbed. So yes. So when we got the first quote, and I, I reviewed this with Andy, this is a specialized service. These are the people who handle doing this. So that's why we can just take the one quote and move on that because it's a specialized service. Uh, when we got the initial one, which is attachment eight, it listed the total cost, um, at, uh, seventy-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, as we had worked with, um, Andy and our environmental attorney, Dave Engel, in the last settlement agreement, we included the fact that we would have to, as a village rehab well seven. And there would be costs specific to PFOA, the capture of water that has PFOA in it, which must be treated. Their equipment must, um, be decontaminated. Um, and in that settlement agreement, they, in a sense, agreed that they would take care of any costs related to PFOA. So after, um, uh, we got this quote from Jim, I sent it to Andy and Dave and we had a conversation and I requested a follow-up. Just to be very clear, so we could pass this on to, to, um, uh, the attorneys for the companies for review. And that's the second letter, which is the one dated today. Um, and that one breaks down very specifically the PFOA related costs. Um, we are in the process of getting this over to, uh, the companies. I think Dave sent these over earlier today, is my understanding. Um, and what the, the breakdown is, because of the, the GAC filter they have to bring in, the frac tanks, which are going to hold the water that's involved in the process. The setup, and then they have to construct a decontamination pad, and then they have to decontaminate their own equipment and rig so they're not bringing PFOA over to their next location. Those costs are forty-one thousand and ninety-five dollars, which means the general rehab costs are thirty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty. Those are the ones that we'll take on. Um, this is something that we budgeted for. We actually budgeted more than the thirty-three thousand dollars. I think we, we were expecting it to be closer to like forty or forty-five. I don't remember off the top of my head. So we have these funds. The question is, and I think I know the answer, can we approve this tonight without having heard specifically from the companies that they are going to finance this? Even though we have it under agreement. Andy, could you give us the quick summary on how to handle this, Nate? Conservative, smart manner.
What I suggested to the mayor is one thing for the board to consider is all that interim settlement agreement, talking about the incidental costs associated with PFOA and well seven rehab. And it was in the prior interim settlement agreement. It would be advisable for the village to have actual commitment from the companies for this specific dollar. How about one step further? That agreement didn't say reimburse, it said, in essence, pay for those incidental costs. It'd be good to have that money already into the village in an Esper account before the board moves forward and actually approves, um, this, this, this contract. This agreement for the company to pursue the work. I just think it's a better idea to, to have money in hand from the companies. Rather than approving an agreement for seventy-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five, it'd be better to approve an agreement with forty-one thousand one hundred and five dollars. City and Esper cap in the village and committing the village just to thirty-three.
Yeah.
So those discussions started today. I think they did, we have a discussion with council for Honeywell. I know it's gone to San Jose two, I think that discussion's in hand. And how many, Honeywell's already reviewing this. But I think it's advisable to get the money in from the companies and, and to move forward, it would require an, uh, the which is part on our part.
To approve this.
authorize this expense.
Yep. So I know we've already talked about the possibility of in a week or two, when we have all the information together in the back truck, possibly having a special meeting. We could add this to that agenda as well. So it's our recommendation, mine and, and Andy's, and of course on Andy's guidance, that we know this, we know it's here, we have the money. We, um, budgeted from our point of view, we just want to make, and make sure we have confirmation of money in hand from the companies before we pull the trigger on something. But we don't want to get stuck on if the companies, you know, throw curveballs in and protest or whatever.
Well, I also think it's, it's better in discussions with companies that we're waiting for their contribution to move forward with the project rather than already having authorized the project. Pull them out from waiting for money with companies. I think.
Yeah.
Companies know we're waiting to have money, so we can move forward and finance the whole well seven rehab. I think that helps with discussions with council.
Is that good with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I guess I would look for a motion to, um, well, we don't technically have it on the board to approve it. Should we do a motion to table accepting or do we even need to do a motion?
This was just supposed to be a discussion.
Okay.
It can be added to a special meeting.
Craig, can you give Jim a call and give him a heads up on that? Awesome. Thank you. All right, um.
And by the way, Craig, you tell him it's realistic that we'll leave it to him. But he, he's waiting to be scheduled, so that's, that's.
Yep.
Why James' therapist, because he knows it's going to take, you know, money to, uh, wants to give it a go ahead.
Okay. All right. So next on the agenda, we have, um, from Department of Public Works regarding hiring. As a reminder, whenever we're talking about personnel or the possibility of hiring personnel, um, there's very little we can handle in an open session. So if we need to go into executive session, session to discuss any part of this. session, session to discuss any part of this, we certainly can, it's not an issue, we have a room over there, we just go over and, and discuss this, so. And Andy, if for some reason we accidentally cross that line, please interrupt us and say, hey, this is an executive session discussion. So first off, we have discussion regarding the hiring of a part-time seasonal employee. This is a seasonal employee who worked with us last summer. Um, it's, uh, also, uh, Charlie Stoll, who's a good worker, and, uh, we get to tease him because we know his father somewhat well. Um, but no, in all reality, uh, we've hired him before and, um, we have the money budgeted for this and we certainly have the work. Um, of course, I'm okay to say the name in public, of course, but...
Of course.
Um, so I guess is, if there is any discussion or, or need, you can basically say, I think we should move to executive session. Otherwise, if there's none, we're just looking for a motion to, um, hire Charlie Stoll as a part-time DPW employee.
I think we should move forward and I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion has been made, uh, by Bobby to hire, uh, the part-time seasonal employee. Do we have a second? Okay. Megan? Uh, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? All right.
And just to clarify, starting?
Um, I think it was as soon as, 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 as possible in a sense.
He's, uh, maybe over, started for, so he'll be available next week.
Okay. All right.
Starting five minute.
It's seasonal.
Yes, part-time seasonal, yep. All right. Great. Um, so last meeting, we, um, let me go, go a step back further. This past budget season, we built in, um, hiring an additional DPW employee, uh, to add to our current workforce, uh, with no question of the, the, we have the work.
You want to put it for Christmas, please?
We forgot to put that out there. Uh, we did put it out for bid, we did get, uh, one response, um, or one application, rather. So I guess the question is, um, and I'm okay if we do this, if we simply want to move to executive session, we can bring Andy and Neil in and ask any questions, I'm fine to do that, it can be pretty simple or brief. Uh, do you guys want to do that, move into executive session to discuss this?
I think so. We had that on our agenda anyways, right?
Yes.
Executive session, so we don't have to have two separate executive sessions if we go do it.
I mean, it doesn't matter, we could do two separate executive sessions, this one and I planned the one later to be stuff that we wouldn't act, uh, on anything afterwards. So do you want, if we, if we save it, that means when we come out of executive session, we have to, um, act on the hiring if we choose to do the hiring. Um, if we just do a quick executive session now, go over and discuss and come back, um, then we can just do that and save the other executive session for later. Okay, so I'm looking for motion to enter executive session. Um, Andy, what would be the specific purpose for this? Just to discuss hiring or personnel?
Personnel.
Okay, personnel matter? Um, I need a second?
Okay.
Okay. Bobby, any further discussion? We need to approve moving to executive session, right? So, uh, all in favor of moving to executive session, just that personnel? Aye. Um, opposed? Okay, we will be back shortly. Um, uh, we're bringing in Neil, we're bringing in Andy, should we bring in Marie as well?
For the board.
Do you guys want to bring in Marie as well?
Sure.
Okay. Please join us. We'll be back shortly, I'm gonna pause the recording at eight seventeen PM. Okay, executive session, uh, ended by motion at eight twenty-seven PM, so we are continuing as soon as we get our remaining trustees coming in, so just bear with a minute. I have restarted the recording. All right. Thank you, we are all back. From executive session, um, uh, I'm looking for a motion to table the hiring of a full-time employee.
Motion.
I don't know who that was, I'll give it to Craig, because I think it was Craig first. And a second? All right, thank you Megan. Any further discussion? All in favor of tabling? Aye. Opposed or abstentions? None, all right. Tabled on to the next thing. Okay. This was something that literally came in under the wire in the last couple hours before this board meeting. Um, so I gave you guys a quick breakdown of the quote. So what happened is, we are in a position where we want to get our server replaced and upgrade some of the equipment and the protections, uh, that we have in our village hall. We've done rewiring, so we have our networks wired, we have our internet connection, we need to, uh, upgrade our hardware and our network hardware and our security, especially in light of a lot of the ransomware attacks that are happening, uh, all over the place. Uh, we talked about getting quotes out, we budgeted, oh geez, I want to say like ten thousand dollars this year to, to do this. Um, and remind me, by the way, not to forget this, because I've already forgotten it like three times. So we got three different quotes, and I want to sort of break down each of the three quotes. The, the, the challenging thing about these quotes is that each quote kind of handled it differently, which is why it's a little bit frustrating, uh, to understand, but let me just walk you through, I'm gonna start you through with the middle, uh, quote from USM Solutions. Um, we actually got the name of, uh, them from Andy, uh, who, uh, uses them, uh, for his IT situations. Um, they quoted, and one of the things, there are a bunch of things that I talked with each of them about to make sure we got a quote. We need a new server, we need, um, a good, up-to-date backup system for our data, we need to, um, get, either fix our current or get a new battery backup so that when power goes out, there's that ten to twenty seconds, I don't even know if it's longer or shorter than ten to twenty seconds where the, the generator kicks on, the power comes back. Um, right now, our battery backup doesn't work, so the server just shuts down with no power, which is not ever a good thing. Um, the firewall is what handles the protection of, in a sense, people trying to hack into our system. Um, and then those were the main points. From that point on, it was what improvements do we need to make right now in our network? And then how much is the cost of installation? How much is the cost of labor? And probably the most important for the office staff, once we get the server fixed, is how do we handle and how much is regular IT calls? If we have a tech support thing, if one of the things stops working. Right now, it's, it's always been piecemeal. Like, we sort of have some people and we've sort of had them, but they're, they're sort of, they're, they're not always available because they also do full-time stuff, and we really have just needed to, for quite some time, um, get something set. And that's what our goal is here, to get a new server, get all the security upgraded, and know exactly who our IT solution is. So let me talk through the three quotes briefly, because they all have that and they have some additional ones. Starting with USM Solutions, um, it comes in at the lowest, which is ten thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eight cents. Um, that includes the new hardware, the installation of the new hardware and setting up various things. We did not talk about some of the software needs that we would have, and one of the things that, um, they did not include was, when you have a tech need and IT support need, how does that work? So they basically just do it as needed on an hourly basis, and they charge a hundred and five dollars, uh, per hour. I will say, as I step back, all three of these, uh, companies are very good, I got to speak with all of them, they all know their stuff times a thousand, um, they're all very good. USM Solutions kind of seems like a smaller group as compared to, um, Edmunds, which would be the next one I would talk about. Um, but all of them are capable and be very happy with all of them. Edmunds GovTech is actually, um, the firm that the town of Housick switched to a couple years, a couple of years ago, right? And the town has been very happy with them, I haven't heard anything, you, you would agree with that, right? Okay. Um, they have been itching to be involved in here. Um, Edmunds was formerly BAS, they, um, BAS was purchased by the larger Edmunds Group. BAS is actually the company that makes two of the four server-based software that our office uses, um, which i- in a sense is a strong advantage, because, um, there's two billing items that we specifically use, um, or no, it's, it's the code one and one of the billing software. Is it the water sewer billing software we use? Server-based? Um, so that's an advantage. Um, what they provide is hardware costs and installation costs, and then they have a lot more annual subscriptions as opposed to what, what USM had set up, which was kind of like, let's get you set up for everything now, and then as a need comes, you just pay for it. So in my mind, they're both very good, they're comparable servers, both of them offer a really good server backup, so that if, as an example, and I, I mentioned ransomware before, if ransomware got into our system, both of these backups will take snapshots of the server at various points, so like, you know, say at the end of, of the workday today, it takes a snapshot, all the data is saved. Ransomware hits us tomorrow, all we do is we basically reset everything back to the snapshot from the previous day. Both of these work that way, both of these offer cloud backup additionally. Um, when I was speaking with USM today, they actually talked about you can get a second version of the hardware, which is that disk station, on a separate site, so that if, you know, like Village Hall, you know, he, he even suggests this possibility because it happened before, but burns down, we would have a, a, a second hardware backup somewhere, or we could have it based in a cloud. Um, so both of the backups work, both of them address the battery backup issue, both of them offerable, offer comparable firewall setups. Edmunds, in my mind, is gonna have more annual costs and annual subscriptions going forward. There will be some annual subscriptions that we have to do for, say, office, uh, Microsoft Office setup that I did not talk to USM about, that I did talk to Edmunds about. But in terms of the annual subscription, they basically set up twenty-eight hundred dollars a year, covers pretty much any random, uh, tech support, like this program isn't working, that sort of thing. If it's an additional thing, like Marie's computer is up in smokes, we need to purchase a new computer, that would be an additional fee, something we plan out and talk about. The last one is diagnostic services and installation. Um, the office staff is familiar with the, the guy we talked to, Ten Chen, he was the one who set up the police office. Um, he is super smart, just super, super smart and up to date on the most, um, top-of-the-line things and so connected to security stuff. His offer was kind of including all the equipment together. As you can see, it's a much more expensive package and I think well out of sort of what we were thinking for costs, um, but the one-time cost of twelve thousand six hundred and ninety would get us set up with a new server, the new backup, the new battery backup, the new firewall, whatever configurations need to be set to the network to get things working and all the data migration. And then his way of doing tech support is a minimum of four hours per month, a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour, um, which is a commitment of five hundred dollars a month or six thousand dollars a year, and that would be an annual thing.
What would be easier?
What's, yes, I, I think that's the case, that, that, that seems to be how it works. I forgot to mention the Edmunds, uh, labor cost, I think that's a hundred and fifty an hour, which comes in the highest, I just want to double check my notes to confirm.
It says overall labor cost one fifty an hour.
Perfect. Yes, and that's, that's, that's what it is for any of their, um, offerings. So I spoke with Denise, I spoke with Marie, um, Denise was comfortable with both of them and would defer to us and defer to me as the sort of the, the, the tech nerd of the group. Marie, do you kind of feel the same way?
Yeah.
Um, they're both good, I think the diagnostic service and installation is like the Cadillac of Cadillacs, I don't think we can afford. So in my mind, I think for just the standard cost, I'm very comfortable with the other two. Um, it's just a matter of, do we want to go with, um, USM Solutions, which I think will probably come out to about the same for the annual cost, but I think will cost less, um, annually, per year, kind of based on usage, but the question is, you know, how much support will we need? Or do we want to go with a situation like Edmunds Gov, uh, a bigger firm, they have lots of people who handle this, um, we're comfortable, you know, we're comfortable with the guys. So I guess my question to you is what are your thoughts?
So you, USM and diagnostic services, have you had experience with those?
We've had e- experience with diagnostic services, they actually bailed us out when we had a huge server issue that bogged everything down, and he was the one who could figure it out. Um, I've spoken with USM a bunch of times, so has Denise, we've never had any tangible experience with them, but Andy's, um, um, Andy's firm uses them, and I guess I'm probably okay to say that you recommended them, you were comfortable with them.
Comfortable, but we've used them for fifteen-plus years.
Do we have any, uh, recommendations or anything from any of the, the first two, Edmunds or USM that, it's to municipalities our size that maybe they would?
Um, I don't have anything tangible, I know that USM sends a pretty good package, so they're kind of used to doing this, and USM talked about, one of the things that they offered in their, um, sort of annual subscription were a lot of reports and a lot of details on things that are happening and going on, you know, attempts to, to get into the firewall. Uh, I did not have that level of conversation with USM, there's, um, I know that it is critical that we move on this soon, I could certainly get some references if you wanted and make a decision in a week or two.
I don't know.
No.
Servers and that kind of thing.
I mean, Mark, I mean, in terms of ways, like Edmunds, what's to tell you, Edmunds, BAS built their company, uh, servicing municipalities.
Yes.
And the local, you know, that's how they started the company, they were recently bought out, uh, just a couple of years ago, around the same time that we, uh, we hired them, they were bought out by Edmunds, which was a larger company out of Connecticut and Jersey, and, you know, and, so the level of service had changed, they'd only increased the product lines that they offered.
Yeah.
So Edmunds is known more, I'm sure, Edmunds know more software core, like payroll and things like that. So that's something they brought to the table, but, you know, the BAS software that, that they developed was the code software and other municipal software, uh, that's how they were.
Yeah, and, and I should have mentioned that, so thank you, Mark, they, they, in, in my discussion, that, that's really where they centered, that they're, they focus on municipalities.
Is there municipality-specific software that you need?
There's four, uh, things we run. Uh, one of them is QuickBooks Enterprise, which...
That's just QuickBooks.
Everyone's comfortable, like, all these guys are comfortable with. Um, there's two BAS Edmunds software, um, that Mark uses, one of them is specific to Mark, one of them is specific to, is it water sewer bills?
Yeah.
That we use in the office, that all, all, all three of the offices ladies use.
And USM is okay providing that, even though it's a product that we currently use that's from Edmunds?
They are comfortable to do the tech support needed. I would not say that they have nearly as much experience with the software as USM one, or I'm sorry, as Edmunds one.
So are we gonna have to switch software to go to USM?
No, 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 no. They would, they would just have to familiarize themselves, and I don't know what level of familiarity they have with that software, but a lot of the tech support is like, you know, why isn't the thing pointing to the server, why isn't the desktop client? You can search that stuff up, but there's no question that Edmunds, which I think is a little bit more expensive on an annual basis, um, has, you know, tons of experience with that software.
I have one last question.
Yeah.
Which one do you want to pick?
Oh, geez.
I mean, ultimately, I think they're, they're so close that you have the profits.
Well, I guess it, it comes down to where does the board want to work, go financially? We budgeted ten thousand, the USM Solutions is pretty close to ten thousand.
Without labor.
Yeah, but... No, with, with, but without tech support.
Without tech support.
Yeah. I think we're good in both situations, I think that long-term Edmunds will, will cost a little bit more because of the annual subscriptions. I feel one hundred percent comfortable with both of them.
Do you think all the annual subscriptions that Edmunds has are included in the cost of the USM or have they missed them?
I think that there's a lot of bells and whistles that come with the Edmunds stuff, which is why that is a little bit more expensive. I don't know how necessary that would be. I think, I guess, you know, you have a tech support firm that's very focused on municipalities. So if the board was content to spend a little bit more and to have that as a regular line item, it's not a bad investment. We're also going to need to look at annually spending several thousand to kind of, you know, replace a computer or two every year, to sort of get things up to snuff, because we haven't done a computer replacement in a couple of years. So either way, we're looking into spending, you know, this is gonna be something we have to regularly handle, it's gone too long the way it is.
And our way of looking at it is that, you know, the way of the world is you have to have IT.
Yeah.
Now, either you have an IT person or you have an IT company, but IT needs to become part of the budget.
Yep.
And that's really, and for us, now, we were already using, we had been using BAS fat software, which is a big component for us, because, you know, dealing with taxes every year. So it was just naturally, it made things easier for us to just kind of gravitate that.
That's the only thing I've heard that's, that any just difference between the two to me is
Yeah.
That software is inherently supported by Edmunds, isn't it?
I'm in
Supported by the other, you know, that's the only thing I've heard is significantly different between the two.
Yeah, I'm in a particular
24/7, you know, support, because a lot of times I'm going in off hours, if I have a computer problem, I have a number right there, I can call, I always get called back in minutes, you know, the support that way has been good for me, you know, and Edmunds, I agree, and I don't like that shit, you know, I don't like the, you know, the subscription fees for these subscriptions, you know, but I just, I went back to the fact that, you know, this is something that's needed. You know, we made that decision a couple of years ago with this stuff, I think I remember something about a local school system that had been hacked, you know, where they lost forty to fifty thousand dollars, maybe that was a significant amount in you know what, to me it was like, I don't want to do that, because it was some kind of
Do you know what the subscription, annual subscriptions are?
The annual, yeah, I do, the annual subscriptions for Edmunds. Let's see here. It keeps track, so they list out a bunch of things, there's a cybersecurity monitoring and protection aspect to it, there's the office and office email accounts and some backup, there's Part of the subscription is the off-site backup as well, which is tied into the backup stuff. Part of it is annual consultation, budget recommendations for replacing things, warranty and coverage, software management, things like that.
Can I, do we have any, if I ask this, how much time do we need for tech support, you know, presently, like how much do we use annually, do we know how many hours ballpark we spend?
We, we haven't, we have been so lucky, like we have been so lucky. But there are times where they're trying to, they're waiting on the server, they're waiting on the network, and it happens more often than it should. So there's no question, this is a critical thing, we need to move on as soon as possible. If you forced me to make a decision, I would struggle because I like both. I think Craig has some wisdom about leaning towards the one that is focused on municipalities and, you know, they own the software, that gives them an edge. I'm happy with both of them, I think that the one that's focused on the municipal governments may be a little bit more expensive long-term, but it's an expense we need to take care of anyway. So I'm okay either way.
Is there no naming fee after the first year for USM?
So USM has the server, the license, they have a five-year hardware warranty on the server, there's a three-year service suite that comes with the firewall. Their idea is to set things up, like the backup system, the part of it is to set it up and it's there, and if you have a need, if, you know, ransomware comes, then you call them and then it's billed hourly. But like, nothing about them seems like it's off, they just seem like down-to-earth, they're gonna do what you need, they're, and they were both that way, they were both willing to, you know, customize things as you need, they're there to make recommendations if you want them, but they're not gonna dictate the terms, so.
So I mean, you know, it's five thousand four hundred in annual subscriptions for Edmunds, so that's an ongoing every year expense, where there isn't that annual ongoing expense for USM?
So part of that is the The backup software choice, that for Edmunds, it's a free item, but it's an annual service. It was, I want to say like
Nineteen hundred dollars.
Nineteen hundred dollars, and that's not just the backup, but that's also the cost of the cloud base. I actually asked, asked USM about cloud base, and he basically said, if you wanted to do that, it's thirty dollars a month or three hundred and sixty a year. Whereas the Edmunds one actually does two different cloud services independently at different locations in the country, is, you know, even another level of possible, whatever.
So if you look at what USM Solutions has for the tech support,
Mm-hmm.
And it's as easy, a hundred and five dollars per hour.
Yep.
And then the first hour of the call, the traditional is fifteen minutes, and weekends is
One and a half.
One and a half times.
So saying it's a hundred and five dollars a hour, just at that.
Mm-hmm.
To add up to twenty-eight hundred dollars that we would get
Mm-hmm.
Help desk software, anytime, anyplace, there'd be twenty-six hours of
Okay, yeah.
Support. Support.
A year. I mean, ideally, if everything's working, we're not needing tech support, we haven't had huge needs, except typically when the power goes down, the server isn't booting up properly.
But that's, that's three days, if you have a problem for three days and you need somebody here, then you have off-site costs.
Even with the weirdest server problem we had, the biggest problem, it took them about four to six hours to handle that, really, really, sure. So I, I don't have a particularly need to bulk rate.
I'll, I'm okay with either, I'm okay with making a motion tonight to authorize either one, I'm gonna make you pick.
Do you lean, oh, geez, driving me crazy, do any of you guys lean in a particular way?
My gut tells me that is.
Yeah.
I'm very content with that.
I agree with Edmunds too, just because we know the town has used them, town is good, good, you know, rapport with them, a good history with them.
If I had to lean somewhere, I think they would have the edge because their focus, their structures around municipalities.
Municipalities, I agree.
And you're getting all that software, you don't know what we're getting with those operators, you know, your software, they're getting any software at all?
We're getting enough that we need to have the firewall working and the suite for years and then
And you have to, like, the office, things that they might need.
Yep. All right, it sounds like we're leaning towards Edmunds, do you want to make, someone make the motion to accept the Edmunds bid?
I did.
I did.
All right, do we need a second? Thank you, Megan, any further discussion?
Do we have to record anything, this is not the lowest bid or anything like that? No, part of the discussion is lowest responsible, you've heard a lot of experience, so that's part of your record, so you need not just the lowest bid, the lowest responsible one.
Okay, all right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? All right, Carrie's, again, I'm silly, we're gonna take on Edmunds. Outstanding, thank you, guys. Okay, Woodsbrook Home Buyout, we do not have a resolution accepting title of county because we're not at that point yet. But we do have the specialized services quote for asbestos abatement for the five properties that we've already purchased. That's something that Mark sent out a while back, I don't think I included it in my recent documents on this one, so my apologies for missing that.
Didn't send that out to everybody shortly after the last meeting.
Yeah, we did.
I had no issues with it, everything looked good and checked out. I'm, my apologies for not having that in the documents this evening.
That is the company that we've used, and the other products that have come so far are very good. What they're talking about doing is the, we have to get a company, a waiver, a waiver, and they will do that as we did a couple of years ago, they will get a blanket waiver that's good for a year, so that covers, typically you do a waiver per project, but they recommend that the last time that they do this time, they just get a blanket waiver.
A waiver, so you don't have to pay any valid wage, is that right?
No, 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 so this is, highly, you go into the structure and do a specific inspection and remove the asbestos, or if it's a demo job, you get a waiver that allows you to model it. There's certain conditions attached to that, it's air monitoring, you have a sample of some of the stuff for proper disposal, but you're not doing a pre-demolition survey on a specific structure. You get a waiver from that, you allow the demo, but there's certain conditions that departmental attaches.
And as a reminder, the cost of this is coming out of the Woodsbrook Buyout program, which we budgeted for, and going this route with this company is totally within all of the ramifications set forth in the contract, and we've used them before.
This identified as a line in the budget. So tonight, you're asking us to authorize accepting this bid for us?
Ambiental, environmental, yep.
It's good for a year. We're not in a position to start demoing anything after we authorize it, so the clock starts running.
Oh, no, we're actually, we're moving fast because we're, the contract
Doesn't, doesn't
Ends at the end of the calendar.
We only have it in the year twenty, of twenty-one.
So if we authorize, we're ready to go and start demoing.
Yeah, that's part of the meeting we're having tomorrow, is to discuss and schedule all this.
This is a turnaround, Mark, getting the results back, like any indication?
Uh, I don't recall what it was before, but I know we need to get moving.
Yeah.
My recollection is, once the waiver application goes into the department labor, it was certainly within a month, the mayor had
Yeah, we will go pretty quickly once we have one.
Yeah.
Because the other projects were asbestos projects.
If you were to ask me a question the other way, we can't start demoing until we have this waiver. That's correct.
Correct.
It's a no-brainer.
Craig has made the motion to accept. Second, Kevin, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? None, Carrie's, great, thank you. CBG grant application for Rogers.
Can I just one question?
Yes, sir.
Now, this proposal in reference was various homes in the village, but in the description it had five of the village, every home.
Right, they knew there was going to be, there's a possibility of a war.
Right.
And that would be subject to separate agreement, or would the No, variants would cover all the products that we do.
They have it listed out like per building.
There may be an additional charge in what they do. Oh, once we get a deadline or any additional charge, but the waiver would cover, the waivers these five buildings, but the waiver would cover any, in addition to the five, any others leaving. Excellent.
Great, thank you. All right, we had talked about this before, it was part of our public hearing, I sent out the two resolutions. The first is a resolution stating our intent to apply for community development block grant CBG funding in the public infrastructure category. This is, I think, attachment two when I sent it out, hello weird bug, it's been bothering Marie. All right, I'm gonna skip down the warehouse statements to now therefore be resolved that the village board authorizes the mayor, Robert Allen, to submit an application to the Office of Community Renewal, CBG Public Infrastructure Program for a maximum of one million dollars, and shall leave a copy of the application materials at Village Hall for inspection by village residents. The mayor shall act as an official representative of the village to act in connection with the submission of the application and to provide such additional information as may be required. And the application requires that the governing body of the applicant provide for and encourage citizen participation through a minimum of two public hearings, one at the time of application, one during the grant application, administration process, sorry, for the purpose of obtaining citizens' views and responding to proposals and questions and environmental review procedures contained in twenty-four CFR Part fifty-eight applies to this program. And that the village board will assume all of the responsibilities for environmental review, decision-making, and action pursuant to the National Environmental Policy Act of nineteen sixty-nine and the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECRE, and this resolution will take effect immediately. So I need someone to offer the motion?
I'll offer the motion.
Thank you, Craig, and second it. Thank you, Bobby. Any further discussion on this? This is basically solidifying that we are putting in the application for the grant. All right, hearing none, it doesn't say there, but we're gonna do a roll call vote.
Mayor Allen?
Uh, yes.
Deputy Mayor Ryan was just trustee, um, Allen.
Yes.
Trustee Pine was just trustee, Alvin.
Yep.
Trustee Walker.
And trustee Decker is absent.
And trustee Decker is absent.
All right, so it approved, thank you, six oh. And part of the recommendation that came from the firm that we're doing this with is to do this next step, set our intent to declare lead agency because that helps the application process, makes things look better. So the other resolution is the intent to declare a lead agency under SECRE. So after all, the warehouse statements now therefore be resolved that the HUSIC Board proposes to act as lead agency in the coordinated review of the project and shall distribute detached notice of intent, Part one of the EAF, in the project description and map to all potentially involved and interested agencies. Looking for someone to offer the resolution? Thank you, was that Kevin? Thank you, Kevin.
Second.
Thank you, Deb, any further discussion on this? Okay, and anything you want to add, are you good?
No, it's good, this is just starting, the secret process is just forming a new establishment.
All right, roll call vote, please, Mike.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Alvin?
Yes.
Trustee Allen. Trustee Pine?
Yes.
Trustee Walker? And trustee Decker is absent.
All right, great passes, thank you. Discussion regarding bids for contractor work to replace the gazebo flooring, I sent out in attachment twelve, two items. The first was the cost of the trex flooring, and that cost was six thousand three hundred ninety, sixty-eight. We had gone into the agreement with the community band that they would put up half, we'd put up the other half, we have not received their half yet. We talked about the finances of this, with last year we had five thousand dollars set to doing this, we just didn't quite get it in with the fiscal year, so those five thousand dollars went to fund balance, I sent you guys the email on this, and this year we have five thousand for personal services such as hiring a contractor and five thousand dollars for contractual. Now, this is not in a gazebo-specific line, this is a park-specific line, and we do have other parks that definitely need some love and support, the Jackson Street Park, I spoke with
Carrie?
Bekitis.
Peg.
Peg, Peg Bekitis, I spoke with Peg Bekitis and there's
You spoke with her, she spoke with you.
Yes, and there's, there's some definite needs that need to happen there, and she proposed some ideas, so we still have money there for
I got a lot of email from Carrie for
Okay.
And then they asked for, were promised by April, two bucket swings, trash can, shingles on the top of the steps, on the top of the, yeah, on the steps, and there were some of the steps were promised by April, they still haven't had it.
You know, the swings, they're bad, they're bad work.
They're on the, they're on the comfort.
All the other things mentioned?
She said that she, we, we get cold watch on the other, so I gotta wait. The two bucket swings, they want a trash can down there, just like the one, the steps are slippery, I guess the shingles are
The steps are really need work.
Yeah, and bucket, there were two different kinds of swings, bucket seat, bucket, the bucket ones were not aging, and another kind, and the school was gonna get one, oh, they was gonna get one.
Yeah, they were.
Okay, yeah, we did replace some of the swings as needed.
Yeah, bucket swings, bucket two, the ball bay there, at Central.
Okay.
And they're not
We're following up, see if they've gotten them, yeah. But yeah, we know we have more work to do there, and we're not using up the funds for gazebo and leaving us empty there, because there are things we actually need to get done there.
Okay, and then, yeah, she had some other things, I forgot to mention.
Do you want to mention now or wait?
I don't know, Bobby hasn't been spoken to.
No, let's get through the whole thing.
All right, so, we put out for bid to get a contractor to do the work on the flooring, we received two, one of them didn't have insurance, and we requested a follow-up on insurance, and they did not provide that, and they have since moved on to other jobs, so we just have the one, it's Phil Hanson, and you guys saw Bobby Decker, basically, I wouldn't say he threatened physical violence, but he wants to see it, see it passed, I'm just kidding. But no, he spoke with Phil Hanson, and they have a good plan, it will probably happen in a couple of weeks, assuming we approve the bid. So that second page of attachment was, for the scope of work, removing the existing deck boards on the bandstand, installing new trex decking, and it was forty-one hundred dollars with the possibility of more if there was reframing or floor joists that needed to be redone. So I guess there's two parts, the first is, are we set to approve this and give the thumbs up on the work, which I am, and Bobby Decker is, and the second part is discussing and Bobby Decker is, uh, and the second part is discussing other things, such as, uh, the possibility of railings and so on and so forth. But the first is, we're, are we ready to move forward and, and confirm that we're gonna have Phil Hansman do the work? Then in that case, I'm looking for a motion to approve Phil Hansman's, uh, bid for the work.
I'll make motion.
Thank you, Deb.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bobby, any further discussion? Any, 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 all good?
Just what about the, so what about the addressing of the spindles and?
Let's get, let's approve this and then we'll talk that next. Yep, no, it's all right, um, so, um, further, no, we had, no, we had further discussion, all in favor of, um, uh, awarding the bid to Phil Hansman? Aye?
Aye.
Um. Opposed or abstentions? All right, Carrie's?
Have we authorized half of the money to buy the Trex material?
We already authorized the purchase of the Trex material, and we purchased it instead of the community band, because we're not charged tax. They will get us the other half of the money, and that will basically show up as income.
It's on order, I talked about, it, it's on order.
Yeah.
That, their Trex is already on order, the first one.
So the community band owes us money?
Yep. Yep, they know, yep.
Community band will be making donations over.
Yes, that's the, that's the way, yes. Um, so we have the work, we have it ordered, we have the work lined up, so we're good there. We were having some other discussions about railings, we may wanna talk about this for a couple of minutes and get some ideas, I don't think we need to move on anything right now.
We had an idea from Phil Hansman, he proposed something.
Yeah, Bob, Bob Decker, I, I saw him, like, passing by that.
I'm aware of it.
Yes, and, uh, he, he said that they had worked out something, they had an idea that might be less easily destructible.
Right, he told me the same thing, he said something about, um, galvanized metal spindles. Where, so they won't, they won't come out, it's easy, it's, like Kevin, the issue is correct, it's kicked the wooden ones out.
Yeah, there's only small rattles holding this, but.
Right, right.
Yeah.
There's, you can kick them out, a two-year-old could kick them out, they're, it's that loose or.
So I guess the question is, I, I think we, it'd be nice, maybe in that special meeting, if we could have some more information about that, discuss the railings.
I don't think we can do anything tonight, right?
No, 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 I, I think, yeah, so why don't we do that, discuss that?
And, and to get an idea of what the cost would be.
Yes.
Are you good?
What he's talking about.
Yeah, and we can discuss if we like that approach or just staying wooden and so on and so forth. Good?
Yes, I'll actually reach out to Bobby Decker and ask him to get a hold of Phil and ask, give us a quote on spindle, his idea of the.
All right, oh, thank you, before I forget, and I, I meant to put this in announcements, um, previous years, we've done the annual Steve Colvin Memorial Five K Race. They didn't do it last year, she did send me an email, Mark in June, asking, um, oh no, it's back in August of last year, sorry, um, about setting it up for October ninth, twenty twenty-one, and then in June, she said, hey, um, any idea if you've confirmed this? So they would like to have the road race on Saturday, October ninth, twenty twenty-one, same route, start and end at the park, and it would begin at nine AM. Um, they're just looking for board approval for that, I am all in for that, so does that work for you guys? And I'll take a motion to approve the road race, uh, Steve Colvin Memorial Five K for Saturday afternoon night. Thank you, did I hear a second over there somewhere? Deb, thank you, uh, further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's? We have a bid for sixty-two Mechanic Street, it was the house that we got years ago, that has, had some issues. We put it out for bid last, uh, meeting to see if anyone was interested, we received a single bid, um, from, I, I'm assuming I can share the name and the cost, but yeah, okay. John Greedwood, uh, he'd like to put a bid of five thousand, I mean, you've been waiting here the whole time for this? I am so sorry, oh, throw something at me so I move it up on the agenda. So John has, has put in, gosh, I'm so sorry, uh, a bid for five thousand dollars for the property located at sixty-two Mechanic Street. Do you wanna say anything since?
Yes, uh, how do you transfer the deed to that, you have a, a, right? You just do a court claim deed, and then you file with the county, right?
Right, we'll, we'll go through that, if it approved, we'll, we'll put together a source of, yeah.
All right, great, um, Mark, recommendation, yes?
Yeah, I have, I'm all about it.
I'm all about it, so we're just looking for a motion to, uh, accept the bid and award it to. Yeah.
Jack, what are your, what are your plans?
You fix it up, right?
Okay. So are you gonna keep it in, uh, uh, what it presently is, what is it considered now, Mark?
Two families.
Multi-family dwelling?
Two families.
Two families, okay. Correct, all right.
All right. Great.
So if we, uh, sell this property, do we still have the money that we received from? So what can we, what can we use that money for?
Oh, that's already been thrown in, that, that's probably been in the budget, I don't know where that went, did that go in small cities?
So many things.
You should email Denise that question where that funding went to, 'cause I'm not exactly sure. I think it's in small cities too. Yeah, I would email Denise and ask her that.
When you say the small cities, what do you mean?
When we got it from the bank, we got a certain thousands of dollars, whatever, and he was wondering where is that money now and what could we use it for? And I think it got put in small cities, I don't know if it got put in general fund, I think it got put in small cities, so, we'll find out.
It have to be locked out, because we still have never made a decision whether we're gonna do anything with it or not.
Right.
I assume it's just sitting there or something.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
So any further discussion? I'm looking for a motion to award the bid to, uh, John Greedwood.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Bobby. Second Craig, further discussion? All in favor, foring the bid?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? Carrie's? Thank you. All right, um, that is all we have on the agenda prior to going into executive session, um, and when we enter, uh, is, uh. Thank you, I'm so sorry. We do have to go back into executive session. Um, we do have to go back into executive session, it, it, it should be fairly brief. We don't have anything to act on coming out of executive session, so at this point, I'm looking for a motion to enter executive session, uh, to seek legal advice from counsel with no business after.
Motion.
Thank you, Bobby, thank you, I think that was Craig, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's, we are entering executive session nine eleven, and we will adjourn right after, so I'm stopping the recording, thank you.